I'm good. Yes, President.
All right, great. Councilmember Reivers?
Yeah, I'm also here.
Okay, and Councilmember Dunn, so I'm sure we can hear you.
Good afternoon.
Great, thanks, everybody. All right, it is 6:02, sorry, we're getting very a couple of minutes late. We have several councilmembers in chamber and the rest attending remotely will do, or call at regular meeting. But today is our workshop on a couple of things. First, the city council rules of procedure, which were last updated in July of 2018, so it's not quite been three years, but things have changed. Councilmembers have changed, and so we've had a couple of great presentations, so if I can get it. We're going to take a look at that. It's along with Roberts' rule. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
I just wanted to bring up that in the past, we always do a roll call.
Well, we do have everybody here. Councilmember Woodruff?
President.
Councilmember Foyer?
Here.
Councilmember Langford?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Present.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
Councilmember Dunn? We got a wave, and Councilmember Dunn?
Everybody.
President.
Yeah, we've got the roll call, but at this point, unless we change it in the rules tonight, it is not a mandatory meeting, so. All right, so I think Mayor Pro Tem, this is one of the things that you were, you know, was kind of on your list for workshop. I think each one of us, I'm hoping each one of us has had a chance to kind of go through Resolution 12-156E, which is our council rules of procedure, to see what may need to be updated. We talked about this a couple of years ago, had some suggestions, and we never moved forward with those suggestions. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you.
Well, I was just going to say that just before the meeting, Chris and I were looking at, you know, we got notes back in January 13th, 2020, even before that. So I would just throw out that a recommendation would be as it for the council, let's just start an open discussion on what we have. Does anybody see anything they would like to have changed or updated or eliminated?
It might be a little bit more, a little bit easier follow-up, we maybe just go through section by section. Everybody has a copy in front of them, so if you want, I can kind of direct that, Mayor Pro Tem, if you'd like.
No, please do.
Okay.
Please do, Mayor.
All right. Oh, you have questions? Oh, yeah. So Todd, can you get that resolution up on the screen? We are working on it. Sure. Well, he's working on that, Mayor Pro Tem. Not, oh, here it comes.
There we, oh, no.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll get there, hold on.
Written comments is an area that perhaps the council would want to discuss.
Yeah.
If they want to make any changes or not.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can, you said we're going to go by section, page to page?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll wait till Todd gets that up on the screen, so you guys can see, and so the rest of the audience can see what we're looking at, and we'll start with page. Yeah, so we've got the cover, and then the actual resolution starts on page one, even though it's page three.
Sorry, I have it here in hard copy. I could go scan it and send it to you?
Yeah.
Double file it.
Okay. Well, I can kind of start.
I have a topic that we probably don't need a slide for.
Okay.
This is one of what, I'm just, we're going page by page.
Yeah.
The notes that I've made, I'm not necessarily looking to change it, I'm just looking for it. Does it still fit how we operate today?
Right.
So for me, on page two, there's 1.5, there's attendance via speakerphone. There's a lot of information.
Yeah.
I think you're correct.
I think most of us probably have that on our list, so.
Yeah.
We might want to start with the first section under general rules.
Okay.
So I guess we just kind of run through it. So we've got Section 1.1, meetings to be public. There's really nothing changed about that. It references an RCW. There we are. Todd, if you can go to the next, I think it's two pages from here. There you go. If you can make a little bit bigger, that'd be great. Okay, so Section 1.1, meetings to be public, references RCW, so that if that RCW changes, it will automatically, this will automatically change with those updates. Does anybody have anything for Section 1.2? I know we've had some discussions on these items, both when Anne McFarland did her Jurassic Parliament and with our recent presentation by Tom Brewbaker. My question on this one was to verify again, the second paragraph, what we can and can't do with regards to asking people to leave the meeting, which is referenced in the second paragraph. You know.
On page one?
Yes, you're on page one, Section 1.2, second paragraph. So I would maybe make a note on that. We'll take the action items on these, to just have the attorney review that, to make sure that we are, that it's still a legal thing to do. I know we were given a couple of examples during the meeting, but I want to make sure we can touch on that. So I'll make a note for, to have Sean review that.
I printed off the notes from that workshop we had on.
Great.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Is this addressed?
Well, so, yeah, so we had a couple of examples during that meeting about when we.
What she wrote here?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it just says on that section, 1.1, basically, suggest adding the word legitimate to the last sentence of reasons, also members and the public. Orders of the mayor.
I like that. Works for me. Does it sound good to everybody else? I mean, we're not, we're not going to play Simon Says in here, come on. All right, so, okay, again, so second paragraph, we'll just review that with Sean, make sure that we have it addressed properly. Quorum 1.3, I don't think anything changed there. Yeah, oh, sorry, Anna, you haven't, you're looking down at my paper.
That's okay. On the second paragraph, I wanted to ask, to define, I guess, unreasonably. I think having, maybe Sean kind of parse out a little bit of what a reasonable disruption would be. I'm just wondering about the wording of that, I think.
Is this the first sentence of the second paragraph you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything that we have?
The, last week, just that the city business couldn't continue, so I think maybe just rephrasing that, but I'm sure Sean will have a better suggestion for that, I'm guessing.
Great. Yeah, and I'll take these notes on those that we are unsure of with regarding the actual aspect. I'll make a note to go over that with him.
Thanks.
All right, so unless there's any other questions on that Section 1.2, I'll keep remembering, look at my screen. I used to have so many councilmembers in chambers, sorry, guys. This is great. 1.3 quorum, it's really nothing we can, nothing needs to change there. We need four C quorum. Attendance and excused absences. This is a little bit of a lengthy section. Does anybody want to make any comments on any part of 1.4? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing would be in the second paragraph, in the past, it's always in my understanding, there are really, the criteria is three that we can be excused. Work, family, health, is that correct?
Yes, and that's on top of the next page.
Okay.
Illness, family emergency, or business obligation.
Now, back in January, one of the recommendations I was making a note of, or other city businesses.
Right, I had that one too, so you want to go ahead and read your statement on that?
Well, just, actually, it was your recommendation. You picked up on that, and I thought it was a good one, so I made note of that, that if a council member is involved in city businesses, training or something like that, representing elsewhere, that I would certainly be in favor of that considering their part of the meeting.
Yeah, I think the note I had was if the absence is due to other city business, to add that information to the minutes as to, and the purpose of the, purpose why they're gone. Like if we're at AWC or another training, because I know there's been many people here who have missed the council meetings while attending other training type of meetings. Does anybody have any objection to that being clarified? Okay, great.
I would certainly add a caveat in there for the council to consider, is to have it to where that individual would be considered attending the meeting, because I know, you know, individuals like to have a clean record of when they're attending a meeting.
Right, it's kind of like, what do they talk about, the asterisks in the baseball Hall of Fame, right?
Right, yeah.
So Mayor, let me add something. I'm considering that, what if one of us misses a meeting because we're out on family vacation? Doesn't fall in any of those categories.
I would just say illness, family, comma, emergency, that would separate the two. So instead of saying illness, family emergency, or business. Great. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I always envisioned family as if individuals on vacation, that falls in the category of family.
Yeah, the way it was written, though, it says family emergency.
Correct.
So we can follow that with a simple comma, so that makes things easier. I did have a note on the previous page on the second paragraph of 1.4. It currently says, members of the council may be excused from a meeting by contacting the mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. And does anybody have any objections to adding the city administrator or city clerk on that? Go ahead.
I prefer to have it to those two individuals for the simple reason, then we get into contacting too many, and who was contacted, who was it? Katie, were you contacted, or you didn't hear anything? Were you contacted? Let's leave it to two individuals.
Who should the two people be?
Well, it's currently Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. Everybody okay with leaving that as this then?
Um, I'd say that as part-time employees.
Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Just an observation, as part-time employees, I don't think we're all immediately available, mayor or Mayor Pro Tem. I'd suggest a staff member here.
That's what's kind of my thinking.
A good point.
Councilmember Reivers, you had your hand up next, and then Councilmember Woodruff.
I'll agree with what Dan said. Also, I would disagree with if, even if we're out on other city business, we should not be counted as attending a meeting. I just want to circle back to that comment, that you're not there, you couldn't vote, therefore, you were not present at the meeting.
Got it. Yeah, and Councilmember Woodruff?
Thank you. What I did last week, because I already had that case in plan before, beyond city council, I let Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the city administrator know. And personally, I think that's good, that you have three people who know just in case. What happens, and one of you may not be here that night for the meeting, and I think three people is not an unreasonable number. Surely, one of the three people is going to be at the meeting that night and can relay the information.
I guess my thought is, if you get ahold of one of the three, that's all you need to do. You don't need to notify all three, but just kind of make your way down the list. So is everybody okay with, is that at least adding the administrator to that list?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. All right, so we're back to page two, to the top. One other thing that I had noted with regards to absences, we've kind of fallen into this, but we don't really have it in writing. So no call, no show being unexcused, however, if it turns out that there is, it was, you know, if you're head of the hospital, you're not going to call, you know, one of us at the last minute to tell us you're going to be at a meeting, but I would like to memorialize somehow that we can go back and retroactively excuse that member. Like you said, life happens, especially these days with COVID and everything. Does anybody have any objections to us coming up with some wording for that?
As long as it comes back up.
The next meeting.
Absolutely.
I will make that note. Got it. Okay, all right. So Councilmember Foyer brought up Section 1.5, it's a big section, and I don't know if we necessarily need to go through the whole thing, line by line. There's a, when this was put in place, we were, had the option of attending on a rare occasion. We had the chance of attending a meeting by phone, and I did that a couple of times. Wasn't necessarily easy, so that was part of the reason at the time where we did it, you know, it's not a rare occasion, but now, given our experience with the remote meetings, given COVID, I think this whole section of 1.5 needs to, needs to be reworked. Is there anything in particular anybody wants to see, or are you okay with us kind of working through this on the staff level and maybe seeing what some other cities have put in place? We don't necessarily have to rewrite it all ourselves and then bring some suggestive wording back.
I agree.
Make sure that includes Zoom.
Yep.
Attendance by Zoom.
Or, the technology changes, so Zoom or any other, any other.
Virtual meeting.
Virtual meeting, yeah, virtual meeting is good.
And MRC mayor is working on some hybrid meeting protocol.
Perfect. Great. Councilmember Foyer?
I think the only question I have is, what is, is there any sort of, this talks about giving a limit of the number of times you can participate virtually, so do we need to have any discussion on that, as far as can you attend as many meetings you want virtually, or do we expect people to be in the council chamber? So I think just the limitations of it, and I'm sure you guys will figure out the platform piece and the language around that, but I don't know if we need to discuss what's reasonable for people to participate not in the council chambers.
Right, yeah, whenever we get back to normal, right? So good point, we can, you know, I think we can bring back some suggested language. If MRC is already working on some of that, Katie, but that can be a good starting point, and you guys can talk about it as a council, the frequency that's acceptable.
Well, we're announced as two times per year.
Right, but at that point, you have to remember that, you know, it was strictly by speakerphone, and it was very difficult. It was basically putting this, putting a speakerphone next to a microphone, and you could barely hear sometimes, quite different than our experience now with regards to the remote video meetings, so we can start with that. But again, that's something you guys can discuss.
Let's have come up with some recommendations.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because it goes into, when you go onto page three, it talks about notification, and how far in advance, again, technology has changed quite a lot since this was put in place. So we'll take that whole section and come back with some recommendations. Any other comments on that section before I move on? Nope, all right. Attendance of city staff. We've got city administrator, city attorney, and city clerk shall attend all meetings, so on and so forth. I do know that, you know, not everybody's available all the time, there are in vacation. Is there anything we need to put in there with regards to or designate me, or are you guys happy with what it says here? We'll handle it on a case by case. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us jump back to C notification.
Sure.
I think we need to, a lot of this, I think, we can look at, is just some wordsmithing. And the second paragraph there, we're talking about notification, this is not possible, the council member said should, but shall notify the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, or administrator, because we just approved, agreed to that previously. I think the verbiage should have the same thing there.
Works.
I'm not comfortable getting into his or her designate.
Yeah.
We get too many, too many chefs, cooks in the kitchen.
Got it. Okay, we'll make sure we hit that when we work on that. So city staff, kind of along the same lines, you know, PTO does come up, and I know like when Anne can't, like in the past, RJ would take the notes, and I think Kyle, and we'll introduce Kyle to everybody during the regular meeting. So Kyle Dixon's our new finance director, and I know you've got, you've got experience in doing that too, so I would expect that you'd fill in, but do you guys feel the need to memorialize that anywhere in this, in this document?
Please, please repeat that, I was.
Section 1.6, the city administrator, city attorney, and city clerk shall attend all meetings. Like I said, you know, not necessarily 100% of the time, that's possible.
Well, speaking of city attorney, that would also include the six o'clock meeting. To me, it kind of makes sense, we would have him attend the six o'clock meeting because.
Yeah, he says they all meetings.
Yeah, all meetings.
Which.
I think this paragraph should be the exception, not the rule. So if there needs to be an exception to this paragraph, then simply say, I can't make it at the six o'clock meeting. But if we leave it as is, that encourages everybody to attend at six o'clock, to the best of their ability.
Yeah, I think when this was written, and I'll give you just two seconds here, Councilmember Kurt. When this was written, we weren't doing the six o'clock workshop, we had separate workshop meetings days, so that.
My point is, it's not going to work for everybody all the time, so those are exceptions to their policy.
So workshops and retreats is what I'm hearing should be added as mandatory attendance.
Well, those are special meetings, so, right, and this says all meetings.
Okay.
So they should fall under that. Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Kurt, sorry for the wait.
Well, that's okay. They'll come back to me. I do like the idea of a designate me just for the, for the vacations and stuff. You asked if we should memorialize that, and I think if we're going to allow it, we should put it in there, that it is allowed, so it can be wrapped up in that it's not allowed if somebody wants to take a vacation or whatnot.
We'll take the notes here, and we'll see what we can come up with. All right, any other, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Maybe not necessarily at this here, but somewhere along through this. I think what's important is, we look at, is that when the council has meetings including the six o'clock, I think it's the same as a seven o'clock, that all council members need to be there. And also, because it is a meeting that we've scheduled, the citizens can come to, I think we should do everything at the six o'clock, we do it at the seven. Roll call, things of that sort there, the prayer and prayers allegiance, we can kick that over to the seven o'clock. But I think it really needs to be put across, is it, if it's mandatory you show up for seven o'clock meetings, it's mandatory you show up for workshops.
Well, I guess if we're going to do that, we might as well just make the council meeting start at six and put it all, put it all in.
Well, and that's a council's, that would be the council's decision.
Talk about it.
That's an option for the council.
And that actually comes up a little bit later, so we can talk about that within a following page, because I know things have morphed from when, a little bit from when we started doing the workshop before the meeting.
Right, it's important for, that because this was new to us, and of course, COVID is new to us, we're trying to make the adjustment as we go along, but my point is this, is from a council member standpoint, also a citizen, we have discussions at six o'clock, which impact everything we do in the city, and not have the full attendance if possible with council, I think is disadvantage to everybody else, because that council person, they don't feel they need to show up at six o'clock. We're having discussions there, which will affect decisions during the seven o'clock.
Great, we can get into more discussion when we get to that section, don't let me forget. All right, attendance of media at council meetings, I don't think there's really much need to do with that. I mean, really, we usually have maybe a reporter or two from one of the local papers, but I don't think there's anything in here that just needs to be addressed.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we need to add anything about web media, internet media? Because that probably wasn't much of a big thing back when this was, 13, right?
Well, this version is 2018.
Yeah, it specifies specifically radio, television, and photographic equipment. It doesn't have anything about internet media. Should we just add that?
Make a note, we'll take, we can take a look. All meetings of the council and its committees shall be open to the media.
Media does cover everything.
Right. And, or maybe do we even cut it down? Maybe we, maybe we even.
Yeah.
And then if technology changes again, then we don't have to change it again. That sounds acceptable to everybody to cut that, cut that paragraph down. So it will be, all meetings of the council and its committees shall be open to the media, period. And we can take. And then we, provided that.
Any such.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, we probably need to leave in, provided that such attendance, or something like that, will not interfere with the conduct. We'll have to figure out what that wording is. A second while I make a note here. Okay, all right. Then we've got 1.8, a journal of proceedings of the minutes shall be kept by the city clerk. We do that, we approve the minutes. I don't think there's anything earth shattering there that needs to be addressed, unless I'm misreading that. Okay, all right, so here we go. So now we're into Section 2, types of meetings. So regular council meetings. So in a nutshell, we've got the council shall meet regularly for the first and third Tuesday of each month, beginning at 7:00 PM and ending at 10:00 PM, with a one-hour extension to 11:00 PM, unless vetoed by a council member. Basically, that's saying it needs, the extension needs to be unanimous. I think unless vetoed by a council member is maybe a little bit misleading. Can we just, can we change that to the meeting system must be unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. When a council meeting falls on a holiday, council may determine an alternate day, such and such. So here's where we get into, so this actually gets broken out, and then we've got special meetings a little bit later.
Can I back up?
Yeah, sure.
What you just said was that to extend that one hour, takes 100% of the council. Why not just go with the majority? Because we do the majority on everything else?
This is the exception to the rule here. So when you extend an hour, you extend for everybody.
Yeah. Yeah, agree.
Okay, that's good. Works for me.
All right, so we will, we will fix the wording to be a little bit more friendly on that. Okay, so, sorry, did you want to leave 7:00 PM? Well, that's what I, that's what I was going to lead into that discussion. So if I may just take, take a minute. So little history, so young, and Oden, you were around. We had, we used to have a community development meeting, we had a public safety and library meeting, and we had finance committee meeting, which were separate, and we had different council members attending each one. Things started getting really busy, what, I don't know how many years ago, I guess, and now, a couple of years now that we've been doing the six o'clock before the meeting, and that started out as kind of, as a substitute for those separate meetings, and we were getting reports from the TV, in the library, and building and engineering, and it seems to have morphed somewhere along the way to us having workshops on specific discussions. So my question is, just an idea, do we want, do we change the start of the regular meeting to six, have the first 45 minutes as those reports, like we started out, then get into our regular business, and just, just put our workshop stuff back in the workshop section with a time limit? Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem, just a place to start.
I would throw out for discussion, leave it at the six o'clock, just simply at six o'clock, and that is for the things we want to discuss there, because in thinking back on it, there's been several times when we didn't have anything we needed to talk about for six o'clock, so we didn't need to do that, and we could, we could continue with the seven o'clock. It sort of evolved, and a lot of reports that we got at the six o'clock is now into the seven. So I would be in favor of keeping it at six o'clock, but take into consideration that I mentioned earlier, everybody should do their best of 10, but there's a lot of individuals who are still working until 5:00 o'clock. There's times, they're not going to be able to get here, so that's what we need to be able to say, okay, you're excused because of work. We have to, we have to work that in, because I do think there's going to be times that we probably don't have anything at six o'clock. It might be so light, I look at this and say, this is something for the six o'clock, it's only going to take 15 minutes. Let's put it at the seven o'clock, cancel the six o'clock, and everybody shows up at seven.
Good night, good point. Councilmember Kurt?
I'd be in favor of actually having everything be in one meeting. I think that having the reports from the other department directors and committees and things make sense as part of a regular meeting. I think I've heard in the past that, I mean, staff has to stay late in order to do the meetings with us, and so I would love to have the meetings actually start at six, and maybe potentially be done earlier in the night, and just having the whole thing be one meeting, having a workshop, if we have a workshop to talk about, having it be a part of our meeting, and having all of it be one meeting versus two.
Councilmember Woodruff?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Kurt. Just thinking back, I believe either our last meeting or the meeting before that, our six o'clock workshop was over at like 6:15, and those of us who were here kind of just hung out for 45 minutes waiting for the next, for the actual meeting to start. I think if we start, it'd just be inclusive of everything. I agree, maybe we can end a little earlier, because our meetings have been running until 10:00 o'clock, since I've joined council, I know I haven't gotten home until 10:30. And I would not object to getting home a little earlier than that. But the other thing is, is that for our citizens who are attending, you know, we have quite a few right now on the six o'clock workshop. If this is all inclusive of a meeting, then we could just keep moving on, and our citizens would be able to take part in all of it, or listen to all of it, take part of it. To me, that just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Foyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Yeah. I'm in favor of this too, moving it from six, but I would want that first hour dedicated to specific topics like we're talking about tonight, because I, for one, when I hit the financial reports and all these other reports. Because I, for one, when I hit the financial reports and all these other reports that we used to have a meeting about pre, before the, before we actually get here on Tuesday, I look them over. I know the rest of the council members look them over. If I have any questions, I'll ask. But I don't know that we need to have a presentation from our new finance director when we've already gotten that information, like you used to do.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I would like to see us keep it focused on one or two topics that we've been identifying for our workshops, but make it the general meeting. And if there is no topics for our workshop, then we're done at eight o'clock. If, but I'd also like, I think we should put a time limit on it, like it's a regular workshop. So we can get the city's business done in the following two hours.
Good point. Councilmember Dunn, I believe you had your hand up?
Uh, yeah. I just want to reflect on the value and utility of a public safety, community development, and finance committee. Uh, I want to reflect on the size, scope, and scale of this city, like, and its growth. And then compare directly to other cities, and I'd say our size and greater. It is, I believe, reasonably important that we as a group are able to act and interact, and sometimes divide and conquer is necessary. I'll reflect on my personal reflection of committee work. Um, I thought it was very important, actually, as a public safety committee, to have, I'd say, a much more in-depth, or I'd say even intimate understanding of the operations of the police department. I recognize that that's not possible. Uh, it is not possible for Chief Simmons to brief and address seven people every, every, the first and third. So personally, uh, I believe that's an important action that we should really reevaluate and potentially return to.
Good point. Uh, there's been, uh, Councilmember Seavers, I haven't heard from you, and Councilmember Langford? No? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Seavers. Sure.
Sorry, I wasn't sure. I would want to go first. Um, yeah, I, I'd speak more in favor of, um, the time to divide out and, and do a separate six o'clock meeting. I don't know how, I'm not particularly opposed to merging the meetings, but I'll, I'll reflect on the, uh, the culture of the six o'clock meeting versus the seven o'clock meeting. Seems to be, six o'clock is more about dialogue and less about voting and taking action. And I value the idea of having some dedicated time in a true workshop fashion to discuss topics of the group, uh, without the goal of a specific outcome, that we can get our, our ideas out there. So I, I, uh, maybe, uh, I may be speaking in favor of what, um, uh, Councilmember Foyer was saying, that if it, if we merge them into one meeting, great. I just value the time, or maybe we can continue to push a culture during workshops, having in-depth valuable discussions amongst ourselves, um, to really wrestle with these topics, um, rather than getting into the meeting and being, and that being time to hammer through business. Um, so I, I don't want to lose that by merging this into one meeting and trying to get done with the meeting as early as possible. Uh, I just want to be careful with that. Um, so anyways, I'll, I'll digress, but I, I, I for one would value leaving them as separate meetings. And also to agree with Councilmember Kennedy, um, that, uh, sometimes we just don't need a six o'clock meeting. Start at seven, get out. Um, you know, so anyway, that, those are, those are my two cents.
Real quick, Councilmember Langford, before I move on. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Kurt.
Um, and I just want to reiterate, or if I didn't say this, that I really value actually having the, the time for the workshop discussions, um, and the sort of informality of it. And, uh, you know, I, I really think that we still need to do that. Um, so I wouldn't be in favor of, of making the meetings shorter, just to make them shorter, but more, um, since pretty much everybody's here at six o'clock anyway, just combining the meetings together and, but still preserving the intent and the quality of the workshops that we've been doing, preserving that time during the meeting, like Councilmember Foyer said.
Okay. Okay. So, so I'm going to kind of summarize what I thought I hear. So obviously, jump, oh, go ahead, Mayor Protem, before I do that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm comfortable, we tried to do in the past, six o'clock and seven. One criteria that's always critical to me is that, that I feel the seven o'clock meeting is critical, that that's where we're discussing, really the meat of what's going on, where we're making decisions and stuff on that. Because my priority is, is for the, our residents. One thing that dominates our conversation is how can we get them involved? How can we keep them involved? How do we get the information to them? If we're going to spend a lot of our time worrying about how long our meetings go, maybe we should be more effective when we're having our meetings. So my concern is we start at six o'clock and have a lot of the meat in that meeting. There are a lot of citizens who are just feeding home from work. They're feeding their children, they're taking care of the laundry and stuff. And they're not going to be, have access to get on Zoom or physically attend a meeting. So I think that we keep that seven o'clock to where the, the meat of the meeting is important. I'm completely comfortable if we have nothing to discuss at the six o'clock. Let's focus to the six o'clock. Let's focus on the seven.
Uh, Councilmember Seavers, go ahead.
Just, just a second. What, uh, Councilmember Kennedy is saying is, I, I agree. It's for working schedules, depending on, uh, somebody's situation. Sometimes six o'clock is just tough. Um, I, I would like to keep it at seven to get people a more breathing room.
And it, and it also just, the reflection on that, it also does let our citizens know when the regular meetings were to start. If, if we start at six, and like, like somebody said, i- if, if our topic only takes us 15 or 20 minutes, we're starting for the seven o'clock earlier than the, the public would normally be used to, um, that may eliminate some, some participation. So kind of just taking everybody's input in, it kind of just sounds like probably status quo for now. It's a six o'clock workshop and then start at seven. Go ahead, Councilmember Hutter.
I'm okay with that.
Something kind of came full circle, but it was well worth discussing. All right.
That's why we get workshops.
Yes, it is.
That's right.
Right.
Ask questions?
Okay. All right. So where are we? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Just, I'd like to suggest.
Absolutely.
There's one time in the year when nobody really wants to be here, and that's on election night, the first Tuesday of November. So don't worry. It says here, when a council meeting falls on a holiday, the council will determine an alternate date.
So do you want to include election day as a holiday?
If council would.
I, I agree with Councilmember Foyer.
I, I remember the, the, the year that, I remember the year that, that Josh Beck and I were running against each other. And I think I lost him by like 100 votes. And we were both sitting in, in the meeting, and the fir, and the first result came in at like 8:15. I'm like, I'm out of here. I'm sorry, coming back the next meeting after that. But yeah, it's not a great place to be sometimes.
Oh, that's, that's right.
So we'll, we'll figure out a way to get that in there. I don't think we'll see any opposition to that. All right. So where are we going now? Okay. So, um, page is it numbered? I believe it's four.
2.2.
Yeah. 2.2. So special meetings. So we've already talked about it a little bit. Special meetings may be called, and this is, this is what, we just need to make sure we clarify and we all agree on. Special meetings may be called by the mayor or any three members of council. Just kind of stop there. Is everybody okay with, with how that is in there? Okay. So I'll take that as a yes. All right. Then we've got, um, talking about the notice, notifying each member, um, 24-hour notice of a special meeting um, to the papers. I don't think there's anything else in that first paragraph that needs to really be addressed, unless somebody wants to point something out. All right. The second, um, paragraph, special meetings may be called without the notice required in this section to deal with emergencies involving injured, damaged persons or property, so on and so forth. Again, I don't think there's anything in there that needs to be addressed. Is there anything anybody thinks they need to add to that section? All right. Go on to section 2.3, continued and adjourned sessions. I don't think ever in, I don't know, you can say too. I don't think that we've ever, maybe we adjourned and continued one meeting eons ago, but I don't think we've ever really, we really run into this much, but, um.
Mayor, I have a little question.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm 2.2. I'm sorry to go backwards.
Sure.
But let's say hypothetically, we're at a council meeting and three council members want a special meeting. Then that's easy to.
Right.
To process. However, if it's not in the meeting and one council member calls and says, I would like a special meeting, then I will have to call another, I will have to call other council members until I get two others that agree. Are you guys okay with that? So Phil calls me and says, I'd like a special meeting on this subject on this day and time. Then I'll say, okay. Then I will need to call until I get two other council members that agree. Are you guys okay with that?
No.
No. Council, well, Councilmember Foyer, then Mayor Protem.
I would say if I'm going to request a special meeting, it's on me to get the other two to agree.
Right.
Okay. And then you report that to me so we can have it in the record, that Councilmember Foyer.
I would think the other two would need to respond themselves.
Okay.
Councilmember, uh, sorry, Mayor Protem, then Councilmember Kurt.
I, I, I agree totally on that. One thing I'm not comfortable with is that council information being funneled through staff, and then that's determined, that determination is given back to us. I'm not comfortable with that at all.
Uh, Councilmember Seavers?
Uh, maybe this is a question directed at Sean. Are we concerned about OPMA violation if council members are having conversation about potential meetings and city business? And, yeah. Um, that sounds a lot to me like discussion of business outside of public meetings.
I don't know. I don't think Sean's on. No, we can ask. And then, um, I had a couple of people, I think Councilmember Kurt was there.
Do we want to make it by a majority or not? Um, I know it's at three right now, but is there any concern with it not being a majority of the council?
Well, and really, it's not a, so you're not taking a vote, you're just talking about having a meeting. Yeah. But that's up to you guys. Councilmember Foyer's next.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. My, my guess would be that the reason why the three members isn't here is so you don't have a majority.
Right.
So, yes, you can talk, I could lobby for, hey, I want to talk about a statue of the mayor in front of the city hall. I just need two other people to join me.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I did want to say that this subject has come up numerous times, AWC meetings and training. And one of the main reasons is what Councilmember Foyer just said, is that if you have four, now they're making a decision. But three is not a decision. And it's important to the OBM that we even have training on that to understand is that cannot get together to discuss and make decisions for council, where three can pull that together.
Okay.
And, and I, I might say, because I made a comment earlier, I'm not comfortable having information go to staff. Staff interpret that. The main reason I'm not comfortable with that, it puts staff in a very uncomfortable position. Because they're in, having to interpret what the council was saying, and then give that interpretation to another council member. I don't want to put staff in that position.
All right. Anything else on 2.2?
Uh, yeah, Chris, Dan, question?
Go ahead.
Uh, I think we learned in last week's special meeting that special meetings cannot have amended agenda. Did I, did I hear that right?
I believe that's what we, we did.
Yeah. I'm just wondering, that isn't clear, and this is instruction. Um, that's state law, maybe? I'm trying to remember that, that action. Just wondering if it should be included here for clarity.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a note that maybe in our CW that we can, that we can refer back to on that.
Just that the agenda of the special meeting is fixed and may not be amended.
Yeah. We'll, we'll double check that, and, um, we can clarify that here. Just a second, I'm writing. Okay. Good point. Thank you. Um, so we talk, continued and adjourned sessions. Okay. Then we have study sessions and workshops. So we may just end up, I, I think we have an opportunity here to clean up some of these things because some of it seems to be redundant. Um, so this talks about study sessions and workshops at the request of the mayor or three members of the council. But we've already put in place where we're having one before regular council meetings when, when, um, when we need one, and that would be three, the mayor or three members of the council. So, um, what I, the note I made here is, um, really, what is the difference between a study session and a workshop? I don't see any difference. So, you know, that's obviously something, you know, we can just clean up the wording.
You can also just get rid of it.
Yeah.
Just call it workshops.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, we, we do have a lot of opportunity here for it to consolidate, make this a lot more clear. Um, it may meet in study sessions and workshops. We'll take that out, open to the public at the request of the mayor or three members of the council. And basically, it's similar to the special meetings with regards to that. The purpose of the workshop is to review and discuss current or proposed programs or projects of the city, including receipt of information, so on and so forth. So that's really, you know, the definition of what we've been doing at the six o'clock. And then, yeah, a lot, a lot more cleanup. The council may also meet for workshops on the first and third Tuesdays of each month prior to the regularly scheduled city council meeting. We just talked about that. Um, purpose of the workshops will be to provide council with information surrounding. So let's, um, work on the wording of those two paragraphs to make it a little bit more concise and easy to follow. Mayor Protem?
Well, thank you, Mayor. On the second paragraph, I'd like to address, bring attention to the second sentence. Says the workshops will allow informal discussion of issues amongst the council, which may also be directed for action at a future regular council meeting or during the workshop as applicable.
Okay.
So keep in mind that, that's, decisions can be made at that point.
Right.
Because, I want to point, point that out because city out in the audience for years, and also here, I hear that quite often, where you can't make decisions, you can't make decisions, you can't make decisions. We can make decisions, it's right there.
Yeah. And that was something Tom Brubaker brought up at our, at our workshop. Councilmember Kurt?
Um, when we, we don't really have a place in here where we talk about any sort of retreat or anything. Is this a place to have that in or add that in a different section? Do we, or do we even need to add that and call that out?
I guess, I guess in my mind, a retreat is really just a, a more targeted workshop. Do you guys feel we need to specify retreat or just, we just consider that a separate workshop?
I'm good with calling it a workshop.
Yep.
Councilmember Seavers?
Perhaps just take out study session and add workshop, or retreat, retreats and workshops.
We can work.
Because it's retreat, don't we get food?
Bring your own lunch.
I just, I just wanted to throw that out.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Foyer?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, in the first paragraph, last sentence, um, provided that all discussions and conclusions thereof shall not constitute binding actions of the council, I believe that's a false statement.
Yeah, well, it could, it definitely contradicts the last, the, the section in the next paragraph that Mayor Protem pointed out. So I've got it, I've got, took the note here to consolidate and clarify. Um, so we'll bring, again, we'll bring back some proposed language. I expect this document to shrink a little bit, um, once we get, um, red lines to take a look at and we, we clarify things.
In my mind, it should just strike the sentence. So.
Got it.
Where was that? It's the paragraph right above, the first paragraph, last sentence of the first paragraph, 2.4.
Says provided all discussions and conclusions shall not constitute binding actions. But in this next paragraph that you printed, that you pointed out.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, it could conflict. All right. Executive sessions, um, again, executive sessions or closed meetings may be held in accordance with the, with the provisions of the Upland Public Meetings Act. Um, they talked about when, um, and announcing, um, what the purpose is, the timeframe. Yeah, I was going to say, I thought there was a section here about, talking about who could call one. Did I miss that? It doesn't say who can request, request an executive session. Do we want to make it mirror the request for special meetings and workshops?
No.
Anybody else? Uh, Councilmember Foyer?[1730.02]
I just have a comment side, how I feel about it. Executive sessions are sensitive topics. And there's only so many topics that can be discussed.
Yes.
Right, fair enough.
Yes.
So it may be personal nature to me only.
We don't want to share.
I would maybe not want to share with the rest of the council. And I would, if I was, if somebody else was requesting an executive session for a personal reason, I would be here to support them and hear what they have to say.
Councilmember Kurt.
Um, and I think also, um, I think that there's, with, with our attorney needing to, you know, weigh in on any litigation matters. I think you'd want him to be able to, I guess, make that request or maybe he would make that through you, Madam Mayor. But I just don't know that we need, you know, three or more people to make that request.
Okay. Yeah, all, all great points. Um, I know I'm not going to read through the whole thing. But like you said, we would want whoever is requesting executive sessions to reach out even to Sean directly to determine whether or not that subject is, is proper for an executive session. Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to point out, we do not have that, we do not have that in writing, but that has been our policy in the past. And usually a lot of times your request goes to Katie, this is the subject item, and Katie's referred to the attorney. And then that individual gets hold of the attorney and deciding how the wording is going to be, does it qualify? And I think it's worked quite well.
Okay. So through, through Katie and then to Sean or to Sean directly, what are, what are we looking for? Because.
Either, either, because I think both will be involved.
Okay.
I think both will be involved at that point.
Any other comments on that? Councilmember Fuller.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry. Are we done with the executive session section?
Um, as soon as I'm done taking my notes.
I have to back up, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, just a suggestion, um, for council's consideration. In the workshop, the way I read this and the way I'm in touch with, I've been told that we have the authority to make a decision during the workshop session because it will be on agenda form, plenty of advance notice. One thing I wonder about is, uh, should we consider not taking, putting in this document, not taking action on ordinances, resolutions during the workshop, workshop session?
Would let me, we can check with city attorney on that, but.
To make those two topics, those two items generally mean only action.
Yes, let me make a note here. We'll figure out a way to clarify that.
We have workshops about ordinances, resolutions all the time.
Just to get the information. We don't want to, we don't want the council to make it, make, take the vote on the resolution or ordinance until the regular meeting is what I'm hearing you say.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, yes.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, if I'm saying it correctly, which, what we do now is that everything we're talking about, ordinance, resolutions, we're just discussing that. And then we agree that yes, this ordinance is such and such. Then we get into it's written and then we have first read, second read.
Yeah.
Correct. So we're really not making sure this is, in the first discussion, but then moving forward with this.
I'm just asking, should we make it clear that no, no final action, I guess, maybe the word, on resolution or notices will happen in workshops?
We can probably clarify that if I read the, um.
You're not saying it's right, but you understand my intent, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, trying to get to.
Just my experience in the past, when it comes to an ordinance or resolution during a workshop is, at the end of the discussion, we say, okay, we're going to put this resolution as an agenda item at our next meeting.
Yeah. So, so later, later on, when we go through the, um, the agenda order, um, it is very, it's very clear that there is separate sections for resolutions and ordinances in the regular, in the regular agenda. So we may not need to clarify that because it's already taken care of in our agenda.
Good point, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to point out that we have less than five minutes over at seven o'clock.
Wow.
So we're not going to obviously get through this.
So what do we have, what do we have before the next meeting? I don't have my list with me. As far as we're talking for 18, we have council's priorities for American Rescue Plan funding. And we don't have full guidance on that yet. Would you guys be opposed to moving that out and picking this up at the next meeting? Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead, you've got your hand up.
I would recommend that, that what we've covered so far, we can get advice from staff. We've asked them to do a few things and also with the attorney. And we can get that information, have it ready for our next meeting, so therefore we can continue on with this.
So everybody, just quick nod or thumbs up, is everybody okay with that move? All right, looks like everybody's good with that. So we'll, we'll continue this discussion. We'll bring back, um, adjusted language that we've got so far. And then we can go on from there. Okay, thanks for the reminder on the time. We were, we were having so much fun, I lost track.
Well, we're being very productive.
We're doing, we're doing great. So, um, so let's just go ahead and take our, about a four minute break. We will start our regular meeting up at seven. We will see everybody in a couple of minutes. Need some new battery? There we go. All right, we're getting everybody spec situated here. Everybody's video is back on. Ready to start our meeting. So we've got Holly, oh, hold on. I agree, I lost Mike. Where'd Mike go?
I've just got, there we go. Thanks, Todd.
I gotta, I gotta move you over now. Hold on, bear with me, guys. Trying to get everybody in order here. Danny. Dan again. So hopefully he'll come back here. Okay, everybody, um, welcome to our, whoops, now my, now my screen just moved on me. Apologize. So welcome to our Tuesday, May 21, 2021, uh, city council meeting. And we also have a public hearing tonight pursuant to Governor Inglis' Order 20-25-12, issued January 11, 2021. Local governments and states too must allow persons to attend public meetings remotely, provided however, the proclamation further allows in-person meetings under limited conditions in addition to remote public meetings. At the present time, due to the conditions required to hold in-person meetings, the City of Liberty Lake will continue to hold all public meetings remotely. We will have citizen comment time at two periods during, during the meeting. If you would like to comment, please send a chat to Todd Henderson, who is managing our meeting, because he will, um, he will let me know. And please also let him know whether or not you are a Liberty, a City of Liberty Lake resident or not. So with that, um, we will go ahead and start with the invocation. Councilmember Seaver.
Lord God, thank you so much for bringing us together today. Uh, as always, we ask that you guide us, be behind us as we're trying to do the best we can for our city. And, and also make sure you're looking over the, uh, those who keep us safe. In your name we pray, amen.
Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting's order. We'll do a quick roll call here, make sure we've got everybody situated. Um, Councilmember Woodruff.
Present.
Councilmember Fuller. Councilmember Langford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
Councilmember Seavers.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Okay, all are present and accounted for. That's great. I'm trying to manage my tiles here. All right, um, we've got the agenda approval.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, for this council consideration. There's only one, it's addition under eight reports. We're going to add the parks and art. I'm going to make a motion, do we make that change?
Okay. We have a second to add Parks and Arts report to the report section?
Second.
A move in second by Councilmember Langford. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the agenda is amended. Thank you very much. All right, so that brings us right into citizen comments. I do see that we have Jill, and Jill, I apologize if I'm going to, I'm probably going to mispronounce your name. Jill Schill, Schill?
Schilb.
Schilb, okay, thank you. Being commensurate, I feel, I, I figured I would give it a try. Um, thank you for joining us. We will, you'll have three minutes and we welcome your comments.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I've been a citizen of Liberty Lake for about 20 years now. Um, actually living now, last 12 years on Country Vista Lane or Country Vista, North Country Vista Boulevard. And, um, we've seen the increasing of housing in this area. Once they opened up this road going through to Apple Way, it's just been one speeding car after another. My section where I live is between, um, Mission and, and Apple Way. Um, we have townhouses on one side and, um, the cottages on the other side. And I've contacted, um, every speeding vehicle coming through, uh, truckers, um, the Central Valley School District, the police. I put a sign out saying, our children, um, we love our children, please slow down. And they, someone hit it and broke my pot that it was in. I spoke with today the Central Valley School District on one of the buses that went through, and they have a GPS inside their buses. And they tracked that bus full of our children going at 34 miles an hour on a 25 mile an hour, uh, section. And the road is not manned for, uh, that excessive speed. They've tried to put in little barriers here and there. But it's just not slowing people down. We have one 25 mile an hour speed limit sign coming in. A recommendation would be that they, uh, with the extra funds that you guys now have because of COVID, that we put in a speed reader, um, sign or some kind of speed enforcement device. So then hopefully people can see, um, what's going on. I've talked to the city, um, the police of Liberty Lake, and they've been out here multiple times. They're doing an amazing job. They're out here ticketing as often as they can. They say when they're pulling someone over to ticket them, four, the cars fly by, um, passing them up. And like I said, I called the, some of the trucking companies that have gone through here and construction workers. And they're really not interested in doing anything about, you know, uh, taking their drivers to task to slow them down. We've got kids here, dogs here. We know what happened at the end of the, the corner section of Mission and Country Vista. Couple of years ago was just devastating to all of us in our community. And I really want to protect our citizens. And I hope that we can find a way to solve this. I've done everything in my power. And now I'm just leading on the city council to do what they can to help us in this little section of area. Again, all the rest of Country Vista, North Country Vista Boulevard going down from Mission down doesn't have a house facing the streets. They have a barrier between the houses and the residents. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jill. And I had actually, I'm very familiar with the road. I know we have one of the councilmembers who, who lives very close to there as well. Usually I don't, I don't put staff on, on the spot, but I know Chief Simmons is with us if he'd like to address the question. If not, the council can, can take it up at a future meeting and discuss. I know Chief, if you want to take a second or not.
Oh yeah, I'll just take a second. Um, yeah, we've, I mean, we've tried our best, uh, to enforce, enforce the speed limit there. The issue is, it is between two ma, or major arterials. Um, so there's a ton of traffic. And thank you for addressing the school bus issue. I noticed that and I wanted to get with Central Valley School District on that myself. So thank you for that. Um, we'll continue to do something. I will get with, um, the other city officials and see if we can come up with some other solution. Whether it's speed bumps or whatever. We'll just have to brainstorm and see if we can come up with a solution for that.
Chief Simmons, may I respond?
Yes.
Thank you. You guys are doing a fabulous job. I've got two of your officers out here, uh, one on his way home every day because he lives in Rocky Hill. And he stops and pulls over as many as he can. The city has advised us that we cannot put in speed bumps because of the snow plowing. So the other, only other solution, I think, is what I've talked about, but it is funds out of the city. But I agree with you. The, the police officers are doing a fabulous job. They're here. I, I get it. They're understanding it. But it's really, we need to now lean on the city to do what they need to do, um, to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much to both of you. And yeah, we will, we will follow up. Thanks, Jill. Appreciate it. Uh, Todd, do we have anybody else? Right, Tim Olson?
Uh, City Council, thank you, Jill, for bringing this up. I think it's a very important topic that we need to discuss for the whole city as we continue to grow. I think it's important to recognize this. It's not going to be, you know, necessarily COVID dollars, but it's definitely going to be smart dollars. They're going to be able to provide some sort of a solution. We'll support Chief Simmons and however we can in order to find this. But we're seeing this in the River District as far as, uh, how Indiana is going to go all the way through to Harvard from, all the way from Barker. We're seeing a lot of speeding people through there. So we're, it's a matter of us being able to look forward and see what's going on. And I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it's incredibly important. I'm, I'm staggered by the, 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 uh, discussion over this, this school bus and how fast they were going. So from that, I appreciate you bringing this to, to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. All right, anybody else? Nobody? Todd? Okay, I guess we will wrap up this portion of citizen comments. Just remember that there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. All right, so then we move on to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations. So, um, I guess really the only one that I have on here, so, um, I don't, but may, may or may not have noticed, Kyle Dixon attending some of our meetings in the past. He's kind of been stealth and, um, kind of trying to be able to hit the ground running. So Kyle started yesterday as our new finance director. Um, so he's joining us here in council chambers. And, um, he's trying to hit the ground running. Uh, RJ Stevenson, our previous finance director, is still staying on part-time for the next couple of weeks to help get Kyle up to speed. Um, I thought it would take a minute or two just to introduce yourself and get a little bit of your background.
Absolutely. My pleasure. And it is my absolute pleasure to be on board with the City of Liberty Lake. I've met most of the staff and we have a great crew here. And I'm excited to meet everybody else. Met a couple of council members already. And so I'm just, I'm really excited to be on board. RJ's been great. We've been meeting for about a month now, uh, on and off, maybe once a week. But, uh, having him on board for, uh, through the end of the month is going to be, is going to be great as well. The city is in really great shape financially. And so he has left the city and council staff has left the city in a great, great position for me to, to come in and then hit the ground running. So I just really appreciate everybody's time to, uh, get to know me. And I'm, I'm, I'm very excited to be here.
I told him this morning he's on day two, so he can no longer play the newbie card. One day and that's it. That's all. One day and that's it. That's all he's got. But no, thanks for joining us, Kyle. We look forward to working with you. Um, and I think the, the other thing I do have, I'm just gonna do it now. So, um, Anne, you are on, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am on.
Okay, so yeah, we kind of tried to, you know, we couldn't put this on the agenda really, um, but this is, uh, this week is Municipal City Clerk Week. So we wanted to recognize Anne for her many, many years of service, and I don't think this will show up. We do have a plaque, uh, where, where, I can't see if this is showing up or not. Oh, my video's off. I apologize, everybody. There we go. Oh, no, it's not gonna show up because of the background. Well, we've got a nice plaque here for Anne. Uh, we're gonna be here for her service, and we will pamper you the rest of the week. Doesn't mean you can get the rest of the week off, but, you know, we'll treat you as good as we can. But we really appreciate you having, being here, Anne, and, um, you've been a great asset to the city. So we want to thank you during Municipal City Clerk's Week.
Madam Mayor, I thank you in return, and I appreciate the recognition, and especially for the Clerk's Professional Week of acknowledgement. It's nice to be recognized, and I thank you. It's my honor.
Well, we're glad to have you here. I know you, you've been recognized at the state level as well, if I remember correctly, so, um, make sure we, uh, we keep you happy. So, all right, I don't think I have got any other special presentations, so we're on to city council reports. Does anybody have any, um, to report at this time? Nobody? All right, it's been a quiet couple of weeks. There you go.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Hey, I, I just wanna, uh, point to special recognition and encourage everyone, uh, if you've not already had a vaccination, we're gonna be having, uh, field vaccinations on 7th, uh, that's coming this Friday. So it's an opportunity, and I ask everybody to do their part for public health. Thanks.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do have one. I was watching the news and since this morning, today, as mostly individuals realize, it's, uh, Recognize the Teacher Day. I think that's very important because needless to say, they have an impact on all of us. They certainly had an impact on me with rulers and knuckles. First couple of years going to a Catholic school. I'm sure anybody else who was there will certainly remember that. So, uh, once again, thanks to all the teachers out there that mold our kids and help us, uh, do what we need to do.
Thanks for reminding us. Thank you very much. All right, uh, and to, to Councilmember Dunn's point, we do have the mobile vaccine clinic. Uh, we keep sharing the link on, on Facebook and other places. Um, there are, um, appointments still available, and then it will be back four weeks later on the, June 4th, yes, the, the four or five days after for follow-ups. So from 2 to 6 in the parking lot to the east of the STCU corporate headquarters. All right, um, and I don't have a whole lot more, more to go over. Um, we, you know, did, did some morning with, with Kyle yesterday. And, um, really happy to have the SRTC interlocal agreement meetings over with. They've been about 90 minutes every couple of weeks. A lot of hard work, but that'll be here in front of the council here shortly to look at that, um, updated interlocal agreement. So, um, meetings have died down a little bit, which is, um, which is good. We can hopefully move forward with some other things.
But I really don't have a whole lot to add this week. Go ahead and speak, uh, city administrator, do we want to do Parks and Arts first?
Why don't we do Parks?
Okay. Who is here for Parks and Arts? Couldn't see. Who is here? Tom, are you here for, oh, there's Lena. There you go.
Hi, guys. Lena Shute, here person Parks and Arts. Um, we just wanted to give the council a quick update and, um, share. We did a call to artists for our Liberty Lake Together project, and we got a few submissions. And in our meeting yesterday, the commission unanimously decided on one of the submissions. The piece is called Grow Together. I think you guys, they're gonna share with you the piece. The artist is not from Liberty. He lives in Seattle, but he has ties to Liberty Lake. He has family living here. And, um, we all just loved the piece. Um, it's a really creative take on our, um, person from our Liberty Lake Together logo. Um, and we wanted to share it with you guys, get your feedback. Laura, uh, Frank is also on if you have specific questions. But our next steps would be to get an artist agreement together and get, um, everything in place and back on, um, a city council, uh, meeting for approval.
Council, anybody on council have any questions?
Question?
Okay, go, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Dunn.
Lena, the, the work has great impact. Can you describe the materials?
Yeah, so I think it's going to be made of a, um, a steel. And, um, the, the leaves in particular are gonna be done in a way that they kind of patina over time. Laura, do you want to go into a little more detail of the dimensions and, and those things?
Yes, I can do that. Um, so as Lena said, it is going to be a steel construction. Um, it has, it's alloyed so that it gets, um, what they're calling an attractive rust or a patina. Uh, the idea behind this is that longer term, it's a low maintenance installation, which is obviously very attractive for an outdoor art installation. The diameters on this piece, kind of the perimeter that you'd be looking at, is about 15 feet by 11 feet, and the tallest statue is about seven feet tall. So one of the, the things, we wanted to just get the input from council before we reach back out to the artist. Um, so we don't really have installation techniques or how that would look at this point, but just wanted to make sure that council was in agreement with the direction we were going.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, and then Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, great, guys. Uh, I see that there's four there. Where do you envision that this would go in the city?
Well, we do have a couple, um, places in mind. I think the first that the commission kind of thought of was, um, in the River District where the community garden, um, is going to be. There's, there's gonna be a spot, um, maybe potentially near there. Um, Laura and I were also going to kind of look around and see if there were some additional places that we thought might be a good fit. But our first reaction was maybe River District where the community garden is going to be.
One other question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, thanks, Lena. Uh, the great thing about art is, art is of the eye of the holder. Can you explain what this is? It looks to me like four leaves with a steel ball on top. You know, can you, can you give me a little more detail?
Look at your Liberty Lake Together logo. The Liberty Lake Together logo.
Well, as a commission, we kind of talked about, we, we talked about the piece, and I think some of us thought it looked like flowers blooming. But some of us saw it as, as, as people, like, uh, a grown-up and, and children kind of off to the side. So I think that's what we liked about it, was that it, it's, it's a little, you're not quite sure, depending on how you look at it, whether it's, it's representative of people, or plants, or a little bit of both. But, um, we loved the title Growing Together. I think that's exactly what we were thinking as a community. We've kind of grown together through this, this time. But, um, yeah, we, we all kind of saw a little bit different things. I see flowers, but I think everybody sees something different.
I have to admit, I think that's, that's one thing about art that I appreciate, and Betty does too, is that look at something, and everybody can get something different from it. So, thanks, Lena. That's great.
Uh, Councilmember Dunn, I think you had your hand up?
No, just that I'm grateful for the work of the commission, and specifically the result that we got. Um, I'm thrilled and excited and look forward to the next steps.
So I guess my question is, since nobody's, nobody's asked it yet, so what are we looking at with regards to cost and your timeline?
Laura, do you wanna talk about cost, and then we can kind of talk about what we thought the timeline would be?
Yeah, so the, the cost, we had, um, we had budgeted about $10,000 for this project, um, the, the cost. And I'm hesitant to float a number just because we still have some, uh, details to flush out with the artist. But the, the piece came in quoted at 9,500. Um, some of the, the details that need to be worked out again are the installation. If that's included in the cost, if that's something that would be additional to the city. And then Lena brought up in our meeting potential sponsorship, so we don't necessarily have a, a final number of what it would be for the city. But, uh, we just wanted to make sure that, before pursuing any of those, that it's something that the council would like us to move forward with.
And timeline, is, is any idea how long, it was, once, um, assuming the go-ahead's given, um, what the timeline would be for the artist to complete the work?
That's another specific question that we're going to ask. Um, but when we put out the call to artists, we had said we wanted to notify, uh, at the end of April. And so we're a little behind on that, in that we would target an early summer installation. So that's the timeline that was given as part of the call, but again, we would finalize those details when we reach out to the artist.
Yeah. I, I think at this point, we would, we would be hoping to get this back in front of council, um, in one of the June, um, council meetings, hopefully the, the earlier one. And then, um, if there's not too much other back and forth, hopefully before the end of summer would be, I would think, a reasonable, um, expectation if everything goes well.
That'd be great timing with our 20th birthday.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller and the Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions for various sizes or different locations? Or one size fits all for different locations?
It looks like one location, four pieces.
It would be one. Interpretation, but the, the take from the artist was a botanical take, so that the, the intent is that they're all together.
Yeah.
10,000 each?
No, all together.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as your group, we're, we're looking at where the art is gonna go throughout the city as we move forward. I'm sure you, I assume you take into consideration where we could have access to lightings, where these, lit up at night, to be able to have the benefit of that, uh, for the, obviously the benefit of enjoyment of seeing it at night, but also it cuts down on vandalism. So any of these type of things, I love the idea of having them illuminated.
Yeah, we did talk as a commission about making sure it's in a location that maybe our cameras, um, are able to be on the piece for vandalism reasons. Um, obviously, if we can, we can get it somewhere where there, there's some, the lights, that would also be ideal. We, we do need to do a little bit more looking to make sure, but I, I think all of those considerations, um, are definitely on our minds as we come up with a location.
Thank you.
I guess at this point, I would just ask, is there, are there any objections from the councils for letting the, um, the Parks and Arts Commission, um, take the next step? All right, good news. So I guess we will look for this, um, on a future agenda item. We really appreciate all your work. It looks great.
Perfect. Thanks, council. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, Laura and Lena. Okay, very, very nice. All right, now for the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Quick update on a number of things. This is a joint report. Just other people are gonna jump in and help me out. Um, first is just a reminder that the American Rescue Plan was $2.39 million. As the mayor stated earlier, um, we don't have clear direction at this time. We're gonna have the workshop on May 18th. We're gonna move that out, because on the 18th, you're gonna be talking about your rules and procedures. Kyle's gonna be very close, uh, closely working on this, and we're both monitoring the information, um, of which projects are eligible. I will mention that there's a lot of vendors out there that are interested in selling us their products. So I just want to make you aware, we're getting inundated with ideas out, out in our community and beyond, about ways that this money can be spent. So we are very mindful of that. We're very mindful of getting the feedback from the council on where you guys want to spend the money.
Yeah, so I know Katie and I have already talked a little bit about, um, the putting together what you guys were expecting to see for the workshop on that with regards to the mixing it in with the strategic plan. Kyle, can you remind me on something? How far back can we go, um, with regards to reimbursement? Because I know that this morning in our, in the director's meeting, it came up that there were some things that we're already seeing that we might identify, like just put a check mark next to because we think they might be eligible?
Um, I guess, I don't know for sure, but it would just be 2021.
Okay.
So we do have a code that we're using, so every time we do something COVID-related, we code that expense to COVID so that we can test its eligibility. But if it's 2021, we should be.
Yeah, and it shouldn't be, you know, certainly anything after March 11th, not when it was actually passed, but better word.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions on that subject? Okay, um, the library, so Janie's gonna give us a quick update on a few things.
Hello, everyone. Um, this is Janie from the library. Hello, council and mayor. It's great to see everyone. Um, the first thing I'd like to do is recognize Sharon Carvo. She has served on the library board for us for the past three years, and she has done a fantastic job. Um, and so we wanted to recognize her, um, this evening. She has served on the board for the past three years, and we have just really valued, um, her input and her opinions. She has, um, younger kids, uh, that she has brought to the library for the past several years to storytime and stuff. So it's been wonderful getting to know her, and I've really valued having her input on the board as someone who, um, is using the library with a family. Um, and that has just been so valuable and wonderful to have her input on the council, um, on our library board. So, thank you, Sharon. So normally, when we're doing this in person, we have a recognition certificate that we would present to her. So that will be presented to her through the mail. So.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome, Sharon. Thank you, Sharon.
I do see, uh, Sandy Bishop on from the trustees. I didn't know, Sandy, if you wanted to add anything?
Well, I just too wanted to say on behalf of the trustees, thank you, Sharon. I know you have a lot of enthusiasm that has spread to the rest of us. And I wish you, excuse me, I wish you well in your next endeavors, because I know you're doing some wonderful things with STEM and students. So, take good care.
Thank you, Sandy. It was wonderful working with you.
And with you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, as was mentioned earlier, oh, I'm sorry, Janie has another part of the report.
Um, the other thing I just wanted to, um, update the council on is the STA Bus Pass program that we're gonna be doing this summer. So last year, the Spokane Transit, um, partnered with the City of Spokane and the City of Spokane Library to give out bus passes to all of the kids ages six to 18 in the City of Spokane area. And, um, over here in Liberty Lake, we had a lot of people calling on the phone, asking us if we were participating in that program. And, you know, last year it wasn't available to us, so we were so excited when STA reached out to us this year, letting us know that they were expanding the program. So the, um, STA is partnering with all the libraries in the area. So it's Liberty Lake, the Spokane County Library District, and the City of Spokane. And they're offering free bus passes to all of the kids in the area. It's for ages six to 18, and it's gonna be running, um, June through the end of September. And so we're just really excited for the access that this program is gonna provide to all of the kids in our county.
Do you know about how many, um, you've given out so far? Has, has that not started yet?
It hasn't started yet. Um, but I, I know they're gonna be distributing them at all of the libraries. And I don't believe there's gonna be a limit on how many that we have. It's just anyone that wants one.
Great, great opportunity.
It is. Okay, on that note, um, number three relates to our mobile vaccine clinic. It was mentioned earlier. It's in the corporate parking lot of STCU. They are a corporate sponsor of this event. Also want to recognize Department of Health and the Air National Guard, who will be managing the logistics and the vaccine for the event. It's from 2 to 6. Um, it, like I said, it is co-sponsored with STCU. They've been a great partner on this. There is still openings. Um, there are, you go online, if you go to our city's website, there's a link. You can register. You don't have to register. But they do recommend it. And again, it's going to be May 7th, and then the second dose will be made, or, excuse me, June 4th.
I'm gonna jump in again because both of the gentlemen are on, on our meeting here. Another big thank you to Tom Salberg and Mark Saddle for hitting all of our businesses in town to get the word out. I like to embarrass them when I can.
Yeah, we've had a great group of volunteers and I know STCU's reached out to all of their employees and everything. So really want everyone to take advantage of this. It's convenient, it's affordable, and it's, it's something that we can all do for public health. On that note, this is a new subject. Number four is related to streetlights in the River District. Give you a real short background. There's a neighborhood south of Mission in the River District that has 11 streetlights. Over the course of decades, those streetlights have been billed by consolidated water to the residents. And so basically the residents were paying for the power and Consolidated was managing the bill. Avista is no longer able and nor is Consolidated to have this program. And so for that reason, they've asked the City of Liberty Lake if we are willing to take over 11 streetlights. They're like $11 to $14 a month. It comes to $1,902 per year and it would be added to our inventory. The streetlights are already there and when we would pay the power bill, if the streetlights become damaged or the bulbs need to be replaced, Avista does all the operation and maintenance. So if the council thinks that this is a good idea, we would bring back an action for you to approve next council meeting and then the billing would start June 1st. Was Damon going to speak to the security piece of it? Yes, if the council would like. Damon, are you able to jump in and share us a little bit about the safety needs of this neighborhood?
I am. You're talking about an area where there's the residents, it's a little lower income area. From it borders the, the City of Spokane Valley. And between the City of Spokane Valley, the Sheriff's Office and the City of Liberty Lake, the Police Department, we've had some issues over there. I know there's been several times where there's been burglaries nearby and the suspects have fled over to that area. One of our problem houses right now that we're dealing with that's abandoned over on Alatna is, is in that area. So from a, you know, thinking about it from a, an aspect of the criminal element, it, it is a little bit of a problem area for us. And again, it would be really nice to have additional lighting over there just because of that reason.
So I guess my question is, what's the ask at this point? Is there something that's going to come back to the council later?
Correct. So next, if the council is okay with it moving forward, we bring back a contract with Avista to take over the ownership of these 11 lights. Two are on Mission and the other nine are tucked back into the neighborhood. And it stacks up against the old railroad right away.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you, mayor. See, last week with Katie was, we were talking about this. She brought this to my attention. I'm kind of familiar with the area and since then I've gone over in the evening a couple of times. The lights to me are a great advantage for the area and also for the entire city of Liberty Lake. I totally support this. The benefit is if we're just taking that over, rent is $1,902 a year. But it actually puts the control of the city over those lights in addition to everything else we have in the city. So before it had to be the residents. If something was wrong with it, they would get a hold of Avista. They would have to go back and forth trying to get the lights taken care of. And there was a lag time there. I see a benefit with the city having it is that I don't see a lag time. If there's something wrong, we can get on it immediately and get it taken care of. So I really support the city doing this.
And councilmember Kurtz and then councilmember Fuller.
I think my question was just more along the lines of what happens if we don't do it? You said that the contract is, the program's no longer available through Avista. So I just wonder what would happen if we didn't do it? I, I'm supportive of them having lights and everything. I just want to understand what the flip side is.
That's a great question. So Avista's working where a variety of neighborhoods are going through the same situation. And if there's not an HOA, they're approaching the individual residents to be charged for the cost of the power for those lights. So, or the lights would go away. If the residents didn't want to pay for the power, then the lights would be removed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fuller had a question and councilmember Dunn.
Thank you, mayor. So this is going to help us maintain these lights, correct? 11 of them. So they're asking us to pay the power bill. Who would make the decision and who would do any improvements? They're probably older lights, I'm assuming with older technology. Maybe Avista is going to update.
I believe they're all LED.
A brighter source, less energy usage, that kind of stuff.
I'm going to see if Melanie Rose is on.
I haven't seen her.
You have not seen her? Okay, I will bring that, we will.
All I would ask is that we, you know, ask Avista to help us with that.
Yeah, so generally speaking, when we pay, and Ben and Lisa, if you know more than I know, my understanding of the lights that we pay the power on, Avista owns and maintains the poles, keeps them up to date, keeps the bulbs working and updates, updates them with new technology. If you want a new pole, then you pay, then you have to enter into an.
So similar to what they do in other neighborhoods.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Councilmember Dunn.
Just I speak in support of it in the, in the name of public safety. I believe this is a, a very reasonable ask and preserves and protects public safety in that neighborhood.
So now I'm going to turn over to Ben, who's going to give us a public works project update.
Good evening, everyone. So right now the automatic switches are being installed at the PD in the library. These are basically the switches that in the event of a power outage would transfer the energy over to the, from the generator rather than the grid system. And we've been working through that. So that's a big step in this, in this project. The Public Works Yard frontage improvements, we're scheduling the bid opening for May 27th, which is a day after the Kramer Road opening. So two big days there. And these will be the frontage improvements along Kramer Parkway, not the interior site, but just up to the gate. The Ridgeline signal is about 95% complete. We're just finalizing some pedestrian push buttons and ADA ramps. And then once the work is completed on the south side for the roadway that connects into the school and the ramps report there, we will actually switch the light to a flashing yellow and red to get everybody used to the new signal that's going in before school starts in the fall. And then one other bit of clarity that I just wanted to touch on too. So I know there's been some discussions about the pedestrian improvements and what we're going to be doing with the crossings on Appleway that are within 300 feet of a signal. And I just wanted to let everybody know that those are going to be analyzed as part of the projects for next year. Because we want to make sure that we're, if we can remove those, we would reuse those lights and use them for another project next year. Those aren't part of this batch that are, that we're looking at awarding tonight.
Questions, go ahead and remember, then.
Ben, why wouldn't, what would be the disadvantage of taking those four lights and using them elsewhere? Why would we wait until next year?
I want to make sure that it's still merited, even if they're within the 300 foot, that we're, we're looking at those crossings a little more carefully and then I can spend some time out there analyzing how much use they actually get before we just outright remove them. I just want to make sure, we will definitely reuse them if we do on other projects. I just want to make sure that they're, they're still not being used and that everybody's going to the signal. And I just need some time to, to focus on that and analyze that.
I can, I can appreciate that, Ben. Obviously, what we're going to have to do is if it's looked at that we need to be within that 300 foot area, we'll need to start changing our rules and regulations on where those are going to go. I really feel it's quite redundant on that, that particular intersection. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ben, quick question for you with regards to the light at Central Valley. I know you said it's changing to flashing first. There've been some discussions with regards to dropping the speed limit in the area, back down to 35 from 45. I wasn't quite sure where that stood.
Yeah, so Stephen is going to be installing those speed limit signs out there as well for the school zone. So people will see those up. They won't be active yet until the school is actually completed. But that should be kind of training everybody as well that there's a new signal and those school speed limit signs. We still need to analyze if we can drop it down further than that. We can figure the overall speed limit along there. But at least the school zone itself and the lights will, will be the, the school zone speed limit.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
So for the, the school zone, there was talk of it being a 35. Are you, are you looking at a 35 or a 20 for that area, the school part?
The school part itself would be the 20, but it was the, basically the buffer between before and after that to slow people down even more in advance of the school zone.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dunn.
I'm grateful to hear the addition of the school zone immediately adjacent, the Ridge Line High School. Just a PSA for everybody, the 20 mile an hour speed limit when ticketed cannot be mitigated. So there's no talking your way out of a ticket if you're ticketed in a school zone.
Can you call my kids and let them know that? All right, thanks, councilmember Dunn. Any other questions for Ben?
Ben, this is Chief. One other question about the 20 mile power zone. Which, which type of sign are we going to throw up there? When kids are present or is it going to be from 7:30 to 9:30 and then from 3:30 to 5:30 or whatever, whatever that specific timeframe is?
So the plan was to do it between those timeframes, but we can adjust that if need be. The way that these signs are set up and the flashing perimeter around them, it gives us a lot more flexibility than previous sign designs. So we can change that if, if you would recommend that we would like to do something different. I'm happy to do that.
I like having the times on it from an enforcement standpoint. It gives us, it's a little bit better when we're writing tickets and the arguments a little less, so.
Perfect. Anything to make your job easier with that. So we'll stick with the times for right now.
I think councilmember Fuller had a quick question.
Thank you, mayor. Ben, you referred to we, we'll decide that or talk about that. Who's we?
For this.
Regarding, regarding the speed changes?
That would be talking with our on-call engineer in regard to the network analysis. That would be talking with our streets crews and talking with Katie and Lisa for the overall plan of what we wanted to do. We have to have traffic, we have to have merit behind changing the speed limit and adjusting that. And I want to make sure there's good engineering data behind doing something like that.
So Ben, if I could offer the council, there's a technical analysis that we have to complete. And we want to share with the council what that technical analysis shows. For instance, what, what is the speed limit? What is the limit to the speed limit as far as the edges of it? And then also it, when should it be in place? I know, and I know what Spokane Valley does in the proximity of all the schools that they have. But we want to bring back the technical analysis to the council and we will share that with all of you. There is some, I don't know how much latitude there is, Ben, in making adjustments.
Yeah, and that's the main thing is that we, if we were making adjustments, we just want to make sure all the timing plans for all the signals that are going in at the Kramer Bridge and the Ridgeline signal and everything function correctly and met those levels of service per the network analysis. And so that's what I just want to understand with the turning movements and the data that we have there, what the best solution is there to make sure that Country Vista still functions correctly? When that technical.
If the council had a strong desire on one of those design elements, then we could go back and see if the technical review would allow us to make those changes.
So at some point, council would be part of the discussion. Specific question. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Ben.
Okay, just a reminder that we have a Trailhead Workshop this Friday, May 7th. It's in person for the council and it will be on Zoom for all of our citizens. The lunch will be 11:30 to 12. The retreat starts at 12. We have to be out of there by 4:30. It's at Meadow with Tech. So thank you to Greenstone, who is providing the location. It's a wonderful meeting area, wonderful meeting room. The binders for the retreat are in your mailboxes. If you haven't picked them up already, please look at where to park. The building is not completely open and so we want you to enter from the south end of the, the major room. And then the, the binders were approved last Friday. And Chris Johnston, our, our pro, has put together a PowerPoint presentation that we just got later this, or earlier this afternoon and we'll be sending that to council first thing in the morning. So are there any questions or comments about this? Okay, one of the main parts of that agenda is the decision tree. The capital project decision tree that councilmember Fuller shared with us not too long ago.
And councilmember Dunn had submitted a couple.
Ideas, yeah.
Couple ideas. Then would you like to share with us that, a little bit from that email you sent to Katie and myself?
Just that I think that an important focus in this action is not necessarily the physical features of the place, but what do you want to do? Or what do we believe that the community would find rewarding? And so I penciled out in a very simple series, I call it a user stories. Let's see, as a retiree, I'd like to drive my golf cart to a golf course in my community and play nine holes. You know, litany of statements like this, to which we can simply say, that's important, this is less important. And then using these statements of what we'd like to do, then begin to discern the physical features of the place.
Thank you. Okay, just a reminder, we have two recruitments underway. One's for a part-time building inspector that is currently being advertised and then also for salary commission. We did extend the salary commission deadline to May 21st. And Chris, I, or mayor, I believe there's some modifications.
So yeah, under the action items, there's some, it, it reminisce it to the city council discussion we had with regards to family relationships. When we, it was brought to our attention that the salary commission position included something about not being related to any employees of the city. And, you know, it's, the, the salary commission isn't setting the salaries of the employees, they're setting it for the elected officials. So what you'll see in front of you, and I believe there were, it was redlined, is a modification to bring that more in line with, with the other description and just to take, and it simply has been reduced to may not be related to any of the, to mayor or council. And it gets the definition that we have before.
So kind of two things. One is they must be a City of Liberty Lake resident. And number two, they cannot be related to an elected official. So those were the two modifications, Chris, you're recommending. Okay, on that note, wrapping up, events, boys is a long list, so I'll go fast. The mobile vaccine clinic, the Trailhead Retreat, Farmer's Market, May 15th. Rotary Memorial Day Ceremony on May 31st, garage sale, the 18th and 19th of June. The book sale at the library, I think this confirmed for June 19th. Fireworks on the 4th of July, cornhole tournament late August. And then we don't know for sure about the Labor Day and the city birthday. So we're thinking that we'll be able to have an event, but we haven't put the details to it. Councilmember Kurtz had that.
Okay, good. Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
Just regarding the Farmer's Market, are we, how should we begin to sign up for that? To be a part of that for city council? And just wondering when we'll talk about that.
Great, great question. I'll tell you what, why don't I, I'll put, put an email together for everybody. We've tried signups in the past and nobody's really signed up, to be flat out on. We, we do need to keep better track, you know, and last year was kind of spotty. The Farmer's Market started late because of COVID. We had some, you know, a lot of things going on and people lied with COVID. So we weren't really worried about, we weren't going to be overstaffed. But I know we do need to be very careful about how many people we have at that tent. So I'll get something out to the council before the end of the week. We usually get there about 8:30 in the morning and we usually break down by one. So in the past, we've tried to split that up into shifts. So if that would work out, that'd be great. Feel free to sign up for a full shift as well. So I will, I will resurrect the signup sheet and try to get that out to everybody. And then I'll, I'll just, I'll go ahead and manage that because I'm there almost every week anyway, so it's mayor pro tem. So maybe we can start to, start to have some additional coverage. That would be amazing.
Well, and I have to admit that I was one of the people that didn't sign up last year because of COVID and all of that. But I'm being vaccinated. I think it's a different ballgame and I'm hoping that we all can go a couple of times this year to spread the, spread the love and, and be available for everybody. So.
Agreed. Oh, and I do have a question, what, what we don't have on here is the Friendsville Library 4A. Holly, do you happen to know what that date is?
Yeah, I believe it's July 14th, it's a Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Yeah, we just had a meeting earlier today, the Friends did. So it looks like, hopefully we'll stay in phase three and not go back, since the governor was a little generous today in not pushing us back, but we, we plan to hold everything outside pretty much, so it will be COVID compliant, the restrictions that we have. We'll have the lawn days and just lots of fun.
Great, and I believe tickets are $30?
Tickets are $30 and they're available at www.libertylakefriends.org.
And it's a Liberty Lake wine cellars again.
Yes, it's at the wine cellars again, they are again our hosts and our sponsors.
They make a good advertising. All right, thanks. Right, that's your report, yeah, okay, that's Annika's report, does anybody have any questions before we move on to workshop discussion? All right, hearing done, so sign code amendment, Lisa, you're up.
Can you bring up my, can you bring up my PowerPoint, please?
It's coming.
So, um, the planning commission has been working on an ordinance to amend the sign code. This was actually brought to us as a potential amendment by Greenstone as they looked at some of the, the, the neighborhood retail cluster in the River District and also as they look at their town center. And one of the things they've been asking, actually Annie's Ice Cream Shop originally asked us to, to approve a blade sign and our code did not allow for that. Now, blade signs are, you can see an example of a blade sign in the upper left-hand corner and going around the clockwise. The insomnia cookies is an example of an awning sign. The Doubletree by Hilton is an example of a canopy sign and you also see the cinema sign is a classic marquee type sign. And one of the things that we found is that none of these things, which are really, tend to be very pedestrian oriented and tend to be opportunities for placemaking and are not addressed at all in our sign code. And actually the blade signs were specifically, were specifically prohibited because they weren't flush against the building. So this was really an opportunity for us to look at some more pedestrian oriented signage and to consider the types, where, where these types of signs could be located and what, what the standards might be for them. Next slide, please. So, um, the planning commission has workedshopped this over a series of about three workshops and the proposed amendments are looking to allow for blade signs in residential zones on public semi-public or public semi-public properties and commercial buildings. And, but to allow blade awning canopy and marquee signs in all other zones, so not residential, but anyplace else. And in those residential zones, we also included provisions for lighting such as neon LED and other illumination. We don't allow flashing signs as we haven't and we actually provided specific standards for neon signs. And before anybody asks me, our definition for neon signs is not just neon, it's all gas electrified signs. So right, actually more frequently now they use freon than they do neon, but, but those are becoming really a, a placemaking thing in recent years. So we did, we looked at providing some standards specifically for neon signs in those non-residential zones. Next slide, please. So, um, we looked at adding, so, so we, specifically when we talked about neon signs, we wanted to make sure that they were compatible with our dark sky requirements and that they also fit into the areas. There was a particular concern as it related to neon signs and lighted signs in the mixed use zones because, because of the potential for vertically, or, or vertical mixed use buildings where there's signage below and apartments above. So we looked at the neon signs and other lighting, lighting, lighted sign standards in the code and they all need to really meet our new lighting standards. And so the neon sign standards specifically, they count towards the allowed signage in a sign area for a building. So we limit how much signage you can have on any building and your neon sounds, signs count towards it, but we absolutely will not allow pulsing, flashing or moving signs. And this is a standard right out of our lighting standard, illuminance of less than 750 delivered lumens must comply with the city's, or greater than 750 must comply with the city's lighting standards. Below it is actually exempted from our lighting ordinance. And finally, an open neon sign does not count towards a sign area if it's under four square feet. So, you know, you have the little open sign. That's, that doesn't count. Next slide, please. So basically, we, we wanted to introduce you to this ordinance, the planning commission, as I said, workshopped it over the course of three meetings, they did have a hearing on this in March and they, they ratified the findings, conclusions and recommendations in April and we are, would like to bring this back to you for a public hearing on May 18th and the first read of the ordinance. And with that, I really wanted to just introduce the topic to you, answer any questions you may have and really just discuss any, any issues that you may have or concerns you may have about this.
Councilmember Dunn and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Hey, thanks Lisa, the introduction is actually very helpful in understanding the context and understanding how the planning commission has gone through some decisions. A blade sign in a residential zone, can you describe or have any more pictorial even examples of how that would be used?
So yeah, so, so first of all, I want to, I want to make it clear that, that blade signs are limited in size. So they, they can't exceed a maximum height of four feet and they have to be located at least eight feet above the ground. The place, the, the places where you might think about them in a residential zone would be at Sweet, Sweet Annie's as an example. That's, that's how this, that, that's how the issue arose originally. She submitted a, a sign permit application for a small blade sign, totally pedestrian oriented, totally. And the code did not allow for it because all building signs have to be flush against the building. And so it kind of defeated the purpose of what you're trying to do in a residential zone where you really want your signage to be very pedestrian oriented. It's, so, so that's, that's kind of where this came from.
Thanks.
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tem, you're next.
Thanks, Mayor, yeah. Thanks Lisa, to you and the, your staff, they, they put a lot of effort and a lot of time into this, I appreciate all the work. My question is, did you make arrangements also to meet with business owners and ask them their opinion how this would affect, help their business or hurt their business?
So I did, I, I had actually had some conversations with the owner of Sweet Annie's. This is something that actually has been brought forward in other communities. The standards are very similar to what have been incorporated in other small Main Street types of downtown areas. And in fact, it, it's been, been very popular in other communities. Again, where I think much of it came from thoughts about what Greenstone and their tenants were envisioning for River District Town Center, which is the area that's on the west side of Harvard Road that where right now I think you see the Welcome Center coming up, we're going to very soon, in the very near future, you're going to see buildings going up for the winery and brewery in that area and we're going to start seeing that town center develop. And, and again, very, the, the vision is very Kendall Yards-esque in terms of what's going to happen there. And, and because the emphasis is so much on the pedestrian, pedestrian orientation, you really want the signage to be pedestrian oriented.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Fuller, I thought you were going to raise your hand.
I was, I was going to let somebody else.
I think you're up.
Oh, okay, I'll thank you, Mayor. Lisa, I, as a member of the planning commission, I really respect where they come from and the amount of time they put into giving, giving us direction. Because I'm listening to the discussion about the blade signs in a residential area, I envisioned my neighbor putting a blade sign out. He's an accountant working out of his home, which is more and more prevalent these days, more and more people are working from their homes. So how does that fit into that scenario?
So it doesn't, it doesn't at all because the only place in the residential areas where blade signs are permitted are on public semi-public, think schools, and commercial establishments. A home occupation is specifically limited in the size of their signs and the type of their sign. And a blade sign is absolutely not allowed, it's specifically prohibited in the home occupation standards. I think there, there are permitted one small unlighted, I think four square foot sign that can hang on there, on the side of their house.
So this is geared more towards a multi-use type area?
So actually, actually no, so in the River District, there is an allowance for what are called neighborhood retail clusters and it's what you see with Sweet Annie's and the coffee shop that, and it also, we're getting a pizza parlor there also and a day, and a preschool on the corner of Indiana and Harvest. And that's allowed in other areas and in fact, there are maybe some other places where that could occur in River Crossing, Easter River Crossing 2020. The intent of that is that they have to be, they're very small scale businesses. Together, they, the, the cluster cannot encompass more than 25,000 square feet and the, the, the businesses are limited in size to, to, to very small businesses. I think what we see in the, the class, the retail cluster, um, the retail cluster at Orchard Park is that it's, these are a couple thousand square feet businesses, so very small, very retail oriented, or very pedestrian oriented and intentionally designed to fit within a residential neighborhood.
More questions again there. Switching gears on you a little bit, Lisa, you said that no moving signs are allowed. I feel like I see moving signs all over the place that have moving lettering, is that a moving sign?
So, so there's specific regulations for the, for the, for the signs that, on the freeway, the electronic signs, those are allowed, there's a specific timing that's, that they're limited to so that it doesn't look like it's moving. You do, we also do allow public reader board signs, but again, they also are subject to a certain standard as to how frequently they move. You'll see, you know, in, in other areas where they do allow, where they're, they allow more of these types of electronic signs, you can see motion, et cetera. Again, you can see it somewhat, it's allowed somewhat on the, the freeway, electronic signs, but that's about the only place in town where it's allowed.
So Lisa, I was going to offer, when the council changed the sign code several years ago, we do allow public zones like the schools and ourselves to put in electronic signs. The lumens and the speed of the moving letters is managed. We do have a number of businesses in Liberty Lake that were grandfathered in and so they were, their signs were up before the city incorporated. So those signs are existing. So.
No, we also, we also changed the code in 2015 or 17 to allow for, for the freeway billboards, the electronic signs on the freeway. And those two are limited both in, in, again, the lumens and also in the speed with which the, the, the image can change.
So there's some exceptions to that?
Right, so along the freeway, it's managed with lumens and the speed of the message. In, in the city, we have the, the elementary school, the middle school and our own reader board. And then we have the ones that are grandfathered in. And that's about it correctly, so we don't allow electronic.
So reader boards are only allowed on public or, or semi-public property and it's, so it's, again, it's the schools and the public entities like ourselves.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hey Lisa, do I remember right that the River District SAP already includes neon?
So, um, it does not because all, all signage, um, all sign, all of our sign code is under the development code. If you go to the River District, it actually references back to the sign code. We, because, because of challenges with, with sign codes, there's a free speech element to them and because, because they have to, so limiting them has to, it can be tied to aesthetics, but the aesthetics, we're one community, so the aesthetics apply to all, whatever. It becomes very challenging to manage two different sign codes and to justify this, having two different sets of standards.
Gotcha.
So.
So the SAP doesn't have its own sign code, it refers back to the municipal.
Exactly, exactly, and we, we didn't allow neon previously and what, that is one of the things that we've stricken from there, but specifically provided standards for when neon would be allowed and what, and how, how big they could be and how, et cetera, the lumens that, all that.
Thanks.
Sure.
So since I don't see any hands up, Lisa, I've got a question. Todd, if you can, if you can go back to the first slide, can you talk to me a little bit about the marquee sign such as the picture you had?
Yeah.
On the, there.
I, so yes, let's talk to you a little bit about that. So the marquee sign, that is bigger and brighter than anything that we would allow in our code based upon the standards. However, it was really just the best example, everybody remembers the old movie theater marquee signs. And so, um, again, the standards that we have specifically, and this is only, so again, I want to say this, that the awning, the, the canopy and marquee signs are only allowed in the non-residential zones, mixed use and commercial zones. So basically, I want, I'm looking for it here, so signing and lettering and loops cannot comprise more than 30% of the total exterior surface of the awning canopy and/or marquee. There's some height limits, the bottom of the sign has to be a minimum of eight feet above the ground and architectural canopies and marquee signs may incorporate lighting and other illumination techniques that do not include elements that are prohibited by other sections. The example is flashing lights, so that, and they still have to comply with the, the references to the lighting standards elsewhere in the code, which are all based upon illuminance.
That's kind of scary looking at that and I know we, I know we do prohibit the, the moving signs where you can move the letters around and things like that, so that's really, in addition to the brightness, that, that's what jumped out at me as well with regards to the moving, the letters that you can change.
And my apologies, I tried to find a different image that was, that, that. And my apologies, I tried to find a different image that was, that, that conveyed what a marquee sign was. But this was truly the best I came up with. And so, so yeah, so great questions. The planning commission had the same question.
Thank you. Councilmember Foyer has another question.
Sorry, one more question now, I'll shut up. Sometime between now and me, Lisa, will see one of your wonderful red line versions of what you changed.
Yes, and I apologize, I did not realize until, I literally, I did not realize until I was sitting in this meeting that apparently the attachment with the red lines were not in. In fact, if I may, I'd like to email the red lines to you all following the meeting. My apologies, that was supposed to be in your packet.
Thank you. Good question. All right. Any other questions? All right, I guess we'll see this come up again, Lisa, and I'll take the note that you'll be emailing the red lines.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So next, you're still up. Next topic is the 2022-2027 Transportation Improvement Program.
Yes. So, so Todd, could you bring up my second presentation? So I wanted to start out just by sharing with you the fact, what we hope to accomplish with this, with this workshop tonight. I just really wanted to introduce to you the draft of the 2022 through 2027 Transportation Improvement Plan and be able to answer questions. And again, get any feedback from you. So a couple of things that I want to point out is that the state law requires cities to adopt annually a six-year transportation improvement plan by June 30th. And, and if we want to go after any grant funding from the state or federal government, it has to, the project has to be on this tip. It, the tip is subject to a non-project SEPA review, so that's the environmental review. And so I've got a timeline for that. And when I send that out, I have to attach a draft of the tip to it. And it also requires a public hearing. So I wanted to give it, you all a chance to review, ask comments, and provide me with some feedback before I send out those notices and the SEPA review. So we do have a public hearing and the, basically adoption by resolution scheduled for June 15th. And that allows the time for us to get through the SEPA process, et cetera. So our timeline is really tight. One of the other things that I want to say, and that's, that's what, I just wanted to point out that that is what it looks like in your packets. And I realize that this is not legible, but I'm going to, I want to just talk through how to read this a little bit. And I want to remind you that we start out with the base of the transportation and pedestrian and trail projects that were adopted as part of the, the capital facilities plan that you adopted in December. But between now and June every year, things change. And so I wanted to talk to you about what's changed in this and why. In this, in this document, you will see the items in red indicate a revision that is based on a change in timing, value, or it's a new project. And I will, I'll walk you through what's changed in the, in just a second. The other thing I want to point out is that the items that are highlighted in green are projects by others. And so these are the projects that are TIF and LIFT eligible. The ones that are included in the Transportation Improvement Plan portion of it are projects that exist, that, that are proposed within existing public right of way. The projects that are TIF and LIFT eligible but not included in the tip, which are listed at the bottom of the page, are projects that are going to occur either outside of right of way, as an example would be the transit parking, or they're, they're going to, they're going to occur in on property that will eventually be dedicated to the city but is not public right now. And so that, so those are just a couple important distinctions. Next slide, please. So I have this, the, the, the transportation improvement plan is organized by preservation projects, enhancement projects, maintenance and, on maintenance and plans or reports. So in terms of the preservation projects, first I wanted to point out that project number two, Country Vista Reconstruction, we moved the design to 2022. It's, the, the, the construction is still planned for 2024 and 2025. But given the fact that the, the, the talk about infrastructure packages, et cetera, we wanted to give an extra year in between to really aggressively solicit grant funding for this project, because it's a pretty big project. So we wanted to move the design up to set ourselves, set the table for applying for grant funds. Number three, Kramer Parkway Reconstruction. That was originally planned for 2024 as an overlay, and it's now a reconstruction project. That was moved up to 2022 because of the rapid deterioration of the condition of the road and the fact that we need to do it now to preserve the, the roadway. So we also had Mission Avenue overlay, which was going to happen in 2022. That's now been delayed until 2023 to allow us the capacity to do the Kramer Parkway Reconstruction. While we also have Kramer Parkway going on, the Kramer Parkway project, the Kramer overpass and roadway extension project going on and, and other activities within our capital facilities plan that is really going to put a strain on staff. We also, we also added a new project, which was Appleway Overlay. This is from fairway lanes to the eastern city limits. And that has to do both with condition and also with the fact that we've got, the county is doing an improvement project from city limits all the way to State Line Road. And so we want to, we want to bring up the, the condition of the roadway. And again, it's, it also is deteriorating at a much more rapid clip than we had expected. Next slide, please. So again, for enhancement projects, we also have number seven, Appleway Frontage Improvements. We, originally, this was, we were going to do the design in 2024 and the construction in 2025. We've deferred the, the design to 2025, but pushed, pushed out the construction to 2027. So the gap in the years has to do with, again, the ability, setting ourselves up to go after grant funding for this project. That's number one. Number two, there's still the potential that this will occur through a developer-driven process. If those, if those properties develop out there, they have to do the frontage improvements as part of their project. Because we are anticipating some development out in that area, we've had people kicking the tires. And, and I think some of the, some of the tire kicking is getting serious. We, I wanted to push it out there to see if, if it wouldn't happen on its own accord. But eventually, we do need to address that. Also, number 14, Mission Avenue Frontage Improvements, this is a project by others. And specifically, it was, Greenstone's going to be doing it as a condition of, as a condition of River Crossing 2020. Because of the timing of it, they're starting design this year and they're looking at construction in 2022. Originally, we thought they were going to do design in 2020 and get it, or, and get the construction underway in 2021. That did not happen. In fact, they're just talking about beginning that now. The other project I wanted to point out was number 17, pedestrian enhancements, that's the flashing beacons. So you will see that the values are updated based upon, based upon our engineers' estimates. But I wanted to point out that until we get done with the, with the projects that are getting awarded tonight, we won't know for sure how much cost savings we have in this year. But the potential does exist based on potential cost savings this year that we could actually identify, get all three of the identified projects installed in 2022. And then we would be looking to our pedestrian master plan to, for, for projects beyond that. Next slide, please. In terms of maintenance projects, so we have, we have a fund that in our CFP identif, has street maintenance at $50,000 a year. We're bumping that to 100,000 per year. So what, what comes out of this? It's crack ceiling, it's striping, but it's also when we have, when we have repair projects like we have with Kramer Parkway this year, or like we had with Mission Avenue two years ago. And based upon the last couple of repair projects that we had to do, where basically we, we had to jump in and do something quickly. We felt that it was important to increase the dollar value to 100,000 because, per year. Again, because these projects have been coming in in the range of 700, 800,000. Plus, we have the other striping and crack ceiling and all the other things. We also added a new line, and that's number 19, sidewalk and pathway maintenance. It's a new category, we're proposing $50,000 a year. This is, this is where we repave pathways, or we do crack ceiling. Or we also, it's the potential to, to deal with the contract for grinding and possibly lifting of sidewalks in a more systematic way. These have generally come out of operating budget, but I think we're, as we hear more and more about sidewalk and pathway maintenance, we wanted to be intentional about funding that. And in being intentional about funding this, we also can potentially go after smaller grants to try and help us with some of these. Next slide, please. The last one is, the, the last category is, is plans and reports. So number 20, the pavement condition study and master plan. We've both updated values based, based upon Ben's research in terms of the, 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 the system that we want to include software and ongoing updates to assessments and periodic updates to the plan. And what this entails is really the, the, using technology to really scan in the condition of our, our pavement system so that we're, so that we're making informed decisions about the schedule for preservation projects in the city. And so this is, so, so we've updated this. One of the things that's cool about this, when they do these, that basically the, it's like a GIS scan of the pavement, they can also do the sidewalks. And so we've deferred the sidewalk master plan to 2022 so that we can also take advantage of start out with the base of getting that sidewalk inventory into the, into the, using the software and into the system and start with that as a base for working with our community, our, our sidewalk committee to really identify and prioritize. But we'll, but we start out with a base of, of technical knowledge on the condition of our, the current condition and location of all of our sidewalks. And then the last one is number 22, the Trail Lighting Master Plan. That was deferred to 2023. And this is, this is one that, again, pushing it out because we don't have capacity. But it's also a question to you if this really is one of your priorities. And so again, it, it's a question for you to consider. So next slide, please. That's, that is basically my summary of what it is. And really, I wanted to get this as much as anything, get it in front of you. And I just want to confirm that unlike the sign code amendments, that this actually was in your packet.
Thanks, Lisa. If they may have any questions, Councilmember Dunn, and then Councilmember Woodruff, and then Councilmember Kurt.
Lisa, could you trot back to the Appleway Frontage Improvements, please?
Yes.
Just the project number.
Yes.
My rec, my recollection is that frontage improvements are the responsibility of adjacent property owner upon development of the property.
That is correct.
So is the city committing dollars in, in that? Or is that just recognizing those, those property owners improving Appleway?
So again, eventually, at some point, if there, again, there's an issue of connectivity and there's an issue of, of the widening of the street, et cetera, the, the sidewalks, et cetera. As development occurs, eventually, we're going to have gaps that we may have to deal with. Again, I put it on the program because we could potentially get some grant funding for it at some point in the future. But I, but I also pushed it out for exactly the reason that you're stating. Because ultimately, we think that that's going to actually happen through people developing their properties. But at the end of the day, if and when Stonehill gets built out, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have residents who are going to want to have access to businesses down Appleway. And we want to make certain that we have a plan for how to get there.
Gotcha. I just would echo then, what resonates for me in the induction of the Transportation Improvement Plan is the grant funding aspect. For staff to be able to drive out and to get funding for these, we have to acknowledge that they're on there. So I value that.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodruff, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, thank you very much for all this. It's very informative. I'd like to go back to the very last thing you talked about, the Trail Lighting Master Plan. It uses the trails a lot. What exactly, where are the trails you were talking about? Because I know there is lighting, say, along Country Vista, excuse me, in Multer and some of those trails. I just wondered what, what, what trails do still be lighting?
So I really don't know the answer to that. Again, this was, this was a prior council members initiative. And it was, I believe, based on SEPTED principles, which is basically community, or yeah. Basically, it's, you're using design to minimize potential concerns as we, as we talked about in the neighborhood with the neighborhood lighting issue. I'm not certain, we'd have to go through and actually inventory what we have with, that have lights, what we have that need lights. But I, but I understand that, that it, there's a concern that some of our trails, that, that there's, there potentially not enough lighting at night.
For, for example, along Mission, east of Multer, that's real, that's really dark at night.
Valley Way.
Yeah.
From Valley Way from Multer to the east, Mission from Multer to the east.
Along, along Liberty Lake Road, that's real there, I've jogged that early in the mornings that I use a headlight.
So there's kind of mixed feelings. There are some people that are concerned about lighting them to attract more activity at night. But I think there are some places where we could improve public safety about lighting them, as you described. The other thing is that we would also want to coordinate very closely with Jen Camp and her crew because we wouldn't want to put in lighting that would impact mowing and
Snow removal.
Snow removal and that type of thing. So it's an idea.
Yes, you will. It needs to be developed. Yeah. Yes. Thank you. I haven't answered my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt, you are next.
Thank you. I just, Lisa, I wanted to say thank you for, for going through this in detail with us and, and preparing us for this. And then also, I, I think that the investments you're proposing for the budget is proactive for both the sidewalks and the other category that you had listed. And I think it's, it's timely, given the, the concerns that were brought up in the community earlier this year. So I just wanted to say thank you for going through it and presenting it tonight. And then just for the, the forethought in being proactive that was demonstrated. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Foyer, you are next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Two questions, if I can. Simple ones.
Simple one first, Lisa. The Kramer Parkway reconstruction, 688,000, 2022. We're, it seems like we're experiencing some costs now to address that road. Is that part of the 688, or is this precautionary measure so it doesn't get any worse?
So this is, so this, what we're doing this year is to keep it from getting any worse, to, 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 to repair where we need to so that we're not damaging the subbase. This project, this project, and this, this dovetails with what's happening with Legacy Ridge West on Kramer Parkway, their frontage improvements and our frontage improvements on the Public Works yard. And then we will come back in, in 2022 and do an overlay that really, that really pulls that all together. And so that, and Ben has been working super closely with, with Parametrics to really come up with design that, that basically addresses, that pulls all those three projects together.
Do you have an idea of a timeline for that Kramer project in 2022? Beginning of the year?
Summer? I think that, I, I think our intent, our, our intent with that would be to potentially go after a TIB grant. And so we are preparing the application right now for that. We do need to do the repair now in order that we can actually get to this place next year. But this, but this would be TIB funded. And I, and so I believe those applications are due the end of August and Parametrics is working on that application right now as we speak.
Okay, that was my easy question. A next question, if I can, Mayor. Thank you. The, on your spreadsheet here, basically you have for the Country Vista reconstruction, operational improvements. Out at 24, 25, you have 1.5 mil plugged in two years in a row. I guess when I see that, it makes me wonder what we're doing today versus 24, 25, because we're currently going to put in a couple of stoplights. There's really, I know the school is going in right now. I don't know what the future plans are for that corridor, but what are we going to spend $3 million on?
So this is, this is a two, this is a two-mile-long corridor. We do need to replace the pavement at some point, or basically do an overlay. But this was, this is also a corridor that is envisioned to be more of a boulevard style, like, like Appleway or Liberty Lake Road. And that is going to be super important as we see build out in that corridor because that will provide traffic calming measure, measures. We have done a very good job of preserving basically a 300-foot separation between driveways to, to set the table for us to be able to provide those landscape medians that will really be play, not just placemaking, but also traffic calming. And I think that's going to be important as we see commercial development down that corridor and the addition of the high school, et cetera.
And Lisa, I'll add on to, as development occurs, as Lisa said, 300 separation between the driveways is key. But also, we don't know where the driveways are going to be. So this project has always been kind of in a holding pattern until that property develops. And if you envision Appleway from Liberty Lake Road to the east, we have what we call protected turning movement. So you have median protected turning movement. And that's the boulevard that Lisa's describing. So the $1.5 million in two years, coming to approximately $3 million, is asphalt, protected turning movement, pedestrian improvement. I don't know about lighting and things like that, Lisa.
We already have lighting out there, but, but there may be some lighting improvements. I guess we have to get into the design of it. But it is a two-mile-long road. And that's, so we've broken it into two years, just be, both from a, from a budgeting standpoint, in the event that we aren't successful with grant, with seeking grant funding, but also from a just managing, managing the project in terms of the, our existing businesses and whatnot. And there's a huge level of effort that needs to go into a construction project like that to really work with businesses and, and help make sure that the public knows that they're open during construction. And we, when I was with the city of Spokane, we did a huge, a huge lift during the Monroe Street project, and it was super successful. And so I, that's what I would envision happening out Country Vista as this project is going on.
One last question, if I can, Mayor. It'll be quick. So at what point do we start having the discussion about the planning phase of that? Is it in 2022, two years out, a year up?
2022 is the design year so that we can go after grant funding in 2023. So yeah, so, so we begin, and we begin having those discussions in 2022.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the TIP? All right. Thanks, Lisa. Appreciate all your hard work on this. All right. Next one. The SRTC interlocal agreement. I will go through this as quickly as I can. So you have copy of the, of the agreement in your packet. I also sent out, I was able to pull the latest red lines and I sent that to the council late this afternoon, so their emails, I think someone go through it. Seven meetings over several months, long meetings, lots of attorneys involved, lots of options presented. But really what it boils down to, so again, the, the existing agreement was done in 2013. There was a lot of cleanup, similar to what we're doing with the council rules of procedure, a lot of consolidation, wording cleanup. The most important things that really came out of this with regards to the number of entities on the board, so it's been expanded to 21. The Spokane tribe and Council tribe have been added as potential voting members. Basically, when you get it into the detail, the SRTC will offer them membership. Every couple of years, they have the option to join or not. But based on the discussions we had, it sounds like they may also, they may prefer to interact with SRTC by a memory of them, I can't, MOU, I can never say that. So again, we just need to make sure that, that the potential is there for them to join. And that's based on federally, they are federally recognized tribes. It also went through and, and we tweaked the number of board members for a couple of the entities based on population growth, as well as the, where is it? Freight and rail representatives were on there and the, and the airport. There is now a rotation schedule for the board members, and there's three standing committees. We have lots of, lots of detail, lots of red lines, lots of meetings, but I think we're in a good place. We looked at the weighting of the, the different memberships. And so really, the, the board has been meeting on this since November. It was kind of approved to be approved, which is where we are tonight. So it's in front of you for your, for your review and approval during the action items. They will need 75% of the membership to approve it, to accept it going forward. So are there any questions on it? A lot of work, a lot of detail. No? Great. I like these short ones. All right. So you'll see this in the action items, which is 10B3, thank you. All right. So now we're to general business.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder for the council staff and also citizens listening, in the last meeting, a change was proposed that on consent agendas, that we would have one motion and then read, I think on the consent agenda, then have a second, and then be able to discuss each one if, if so desired. I'll read it again tonight. I would recommend at some point, maybe by the next meeting, if the council is comfortable of this change, that they agree to this and we can move forward. If people aren't, they want to do it individually, it'll be a decision of the council. So consent agenda, make a motion that, one, approve the April 13, 2021 City Council Special Meeting Minutes. Two, approve the April 20, 2021 City Council Meeting Minutes. Item three, approve the April 27, 2021 City Council Special Meeting Minutes. And four, approve the May 4, 2021 vouchers in the amount of $120,148.57.
All right. Second, second by Councilmember Woodruff. All right. Are there any, any discussion on our four consent agenda items? Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question on the vouchers. Last month, we, we didn't have a breakdown, but we had included the payroll. So the number was much larger than just expenses. Does the city pay it once a month?
All right. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? All right. Move second and approve.
Thank you, Mayor. B, action items. Make a motion to confirm Mayor's appointment of Kyla Scott, Liberty Lake Municipal Library Board of Trustees.
Second. Okay, seconded by Councilmember Woodruff. So yeah, so Kyla Scott was one of three, if I remember correctly, applicant, applicants that we got for the library board, all great applicants. Janie and I interviewed her along, as well as the others. She and her family, you know, are frequent users of the library. They have, Janie, correct me if I'm wrong, two or three young kids, so they, two, thank you. Been coming to Storytime since they were little, so Janie's been able to kind of watch them grow up. Found that, you know, she's going to bring dynamic to the board because she's got the younger kids to make sure that, you know, we're kind of, they're kind of, you know, looking at all aspects of the community. And one thing that really stuck out, stuck out to me with Kyla was, you know, she said, you know, the library is where her family is engaged right now with the community. That, that, that's where they spend most of their time and she really wanted to give back. So unfortunately, her resident, her application didn't get included in the packet, but I did send it to the council separately. So I would appreciate if you guys have any questions. If not, then I can call for a vote. No questions? All right. So all in favor of confirming Kyla Scott to the library board, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's like, I have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Action item number two, motion authorize the mayor to execute agreement with vacant concrete ink on a $54,613 for the 15% contingency to be managed by staff for the installation. I'm jumping ahead to Wednesday for the Cinco de Mayo. Installation of three RFP pedestrian crossings at a total authorized cost of $62,805.
Seconded by Councilmember Woodruff. Any questions or comments? Mayor Protim?
Yes, a question with Ben. Ben, could you tell us the three that are being done under that?
As I was muted, just a second. Yes, they were Wind Rock at Autumn Crossing, Country Vista at Eagle Bend, and Country Vista at Eagle.
Thanks, Ben.
All right. And just, you know, what's really, one of the things that's really important to note is that these bids, including the contingency, came in about $37,000 in the, under the initial estimate, which is what Ben was referring to earlier about some savings that we might be able to put forward next, pulling some stuff into next year. Mayor Protim.
Yes, I would like to make a comment also with this, is that everybody remembers on these pedestrian crossings, this is something we've gone back, good Lord, maybe two years ago, to start looking at this. It's been a long process. And one of the things that did come out of this is that a few of the citizens who paid attention and were regular attendees in the meeting took upon themselves to start knocking on doors and asking individuals if the sub may support or have these put around schools in different areas. And these individuals went out and collected in excess of 200 signatures. So I really want to compliment the grassroots efforts of these citizens that took that responsibility on and went out and brought that to our attention. Once again, thank you for the citizens. I'm really pleased to see you involved. Thank you.
Right. There's no other comments? All in favor of authorizing the agreement with vacant concrete, please say aye.
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 All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Action item three, motion to approve interlocal agreement with the Spokane Regional Transportation Council, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Seconded by Councilmember Woodruff. Any questions? Discussion? Right. Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
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 Big first drag words there. Any opposed? All right. Not hearing any? Motion passes.
Very good. Action item number four, last, to say the least. Motion authorize the mayor to execute a contract with ACI Northwest for Kramer Parkway repairs in the amount of $81,432.22.
Seconded by Councilmember Woodruff. Any question? I see, Mayor Protim, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I do. Does, does this have a percent, 50% contingency in there, or 10%? Is that included or is that in addition too?
There is nothing there.
15%.
So 15% on top, this $81,432.22, Ben?
Or is it included in your amount?
Sorry, then, contingency is included in the amount.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to find a way to say this nicely. I feel like we took precautionary measures to save the road in the spring. And yet I see here during the spring, Kramer Parkway sustained some major damage to the asphalt and the subgrade. I guess I'm just wondering how that happened, if we took precautions by putting weight restrictions on the road and now it's closed. So any insight on that?
Yeah, it's a great question. The main thing that we're trying to do is protect the subgrade from an entire reconstruction. Right now, by doing these repairs and by keeping the closures up, we can allow this to get through this next winter and into the spring before we can do the full repairs. But had we opened it up completely, the total reconstruction for next year that we'd be going after the grant funding would be substantially more.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that. But when I read this, it makes me wonder if somebody wasn't following our weight restrictions and used the road without authorization. If that's not the case, is what you're telling me, it was just previous damage from wear and tear over the years before without weight restrictions on it?
Yes, that's correct. There's, there were some weight restrictions on it, but I think this illuminates the need and kind of ties back in to that item in the transportation plan that basically says that if we have a pavement management plan that accurately collects all the data for the road networks within the city, we can be far more proactive in predicting things like this that happen. There are surface-level things that engineers and road folks can look at that give some indication of the subgrade, but the reality is, is without doing all the scientific data collection through the falling weight deflectometer or core samples or scanning of the roadway, it's difficult to tell exactly what needs to be done beneath the surface of the roadway. And so that's why I'm such a big advocate, and Lisa's such a big advocate of collecting this data upfront so we don't get in the same position that we are in right now, where the road seems like it's working pretty well and then all of a sudden is failing really bad with certain conditions.
If I can, Mayor. Thank you. So as a follow-up, Ben, and maybe this is the, my question, that as I've read all this information up to this point, we've had the road closed, we've put weight restrictions on it. Now we have a transportation plan that we're going to take care of it next year. Then when do you anticipate the road's going to be open again for light vehicles? Because right now it's shut down for some, some private improvements. It's probably a hassle for our public works, our own, our own streets folks to get to their facility. Do you have any anticipated timeline of when we see some access to that road?
Yes. So once the, so the plan is for this contract and these repairs to be done in conjunction with the current closure that's going on there right now. And that way, we minimize impacts to construction traffic and the citizens there so they can finish the improvements on Legacy Ridge, roll into these repairs. So they can finish the improvements on Legacy Ridge, roll into these repairs, and then that road can be opened up in its entirety once those Legacy Ridge repairs are done, or the improvements are done there, and then these fixes for these particular spots in Kramer. And then that whole road can be opened up for all traffic. But then during the winter, we will still need to put the closures in place to protect it for the final project that will be, that we're applying for, for the grant right now, will be in design and will likely go to bid in the winter to be set up to do next summer. So we're trying to protect it through the winter, then we're looking at next winter as the crucial time period that we need to protect it. And so by next year, that full road will be able to be done completely. And then it will be open to all sorts of traffic and then linked into the Kramer Bridge project.
But short term, it will be reopened sixty days?
I, that's, that's the plan right now. We haven't gotten a final schedule, but yes, that's the target. And we've been pushing them hard as part of this award to, to roll this in to the project that they're already doing.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's any, no other discussion, almost lost my place there. So hearing no more discussion, all in favor of authorizing the contract with ACI Northwest, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, so next up, we have public hearings and appeals. So we have a public hearing for the landscape code. So I will go ahead, well, Lisa, if you want to say anything before I open up the public hearing.
Yes, quickly, if I could, please, I want to set the table for when we talk about the ordinance. So it's a, it's a very quick presentation and just want to kind of walk you through the findings and conclusions. Thank you. Todd, can you bring up my presentation?
He's working on it.
Thank you. So the proposal summary, we workshop this in kind of a lot of detail at the last meeting. Again, this is, these are city-initiated amendments to the, to the, to the landscaping code. And we do have the red line version attached to this, to this portion of your packet. Next slide, please. So against, I want to just highlight the, the overarching comprehensive goals and policies that natural setting is important and landscaping should enhance that. We want to emphasize water conserving landscapes, use landscape screening for, or use landscaping for screening and aesthetics. Trees are important and conservation is preferred and tree diversity is encouraged. The detailed goals and policies that apply to this code amendment are actually listed in the planning commission's findings, conclusions, and recommendations on, I think, page three, maybe? Page, I'm sorry. Page, yes, page three. Next slide, please. So I just, the intent of the amendments, this is intended to simplify the code, make it less prescriptive and more performance-based, create flexibility in design, maintaining both aesthetic values, but also maintaining the visibility of businesses. It also, we also incorporated safety considerations into these standards and wanted to really look at opportunities to reduce maintenance and water usage for the end users and provide standards for buffering is appropriate. Next slide, please. And this is in your packet, the procedural summary. Again, planning commission had a total of nine workshops on this, plus a public hearing. We did, we didn't meet the requirements for SEPA, and we did meet both city and state requirements in terms of noticing for the hearings, et cetera. Again, planning commission had their hearing on March twenty-fourth. Next slide, please. And so they, the planning commission did find that we had met our requirements under SEPA, public agency notices. We did engage the public early and continuously, at least as best we could in this COVID world. And the public did have the opportunity to submit written comments and testify at a public hearing. Next slide, please. Uh, the key planning commission conclusions, which are required for adoption of an amendment to the development code as per City Code ten, four, B, five, A. The amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. The amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. The amendment is necessary to provide for uses that were not previously addressed. And the amendment is deemed necessary as being in the public interest. And with that, the planning commission, next slide, please. The planning commission did, um, recommend approval of the amendments as written by a vote of six to one. And with that, unless there's any questions of me, we can open it up to public testimony.
Any questions from the council? All right, so we will go ahead and open a public hearing. So if anybody has any comments on this amendment, we will start the public hearing here at eight fifty-eight. Please let Todd know through the chat feature if you'd like to provide any feedback or testimony on this amendment. So we'll go ahead and open it. This is always the awkward minute that we leave it open when nobody wants to say anything.
Need some Jeopardy music.
All right, Todd, we, nobody? All right, going once, going twice, while Verizon Time says we have flipped over to eight fifty-nine. So we will go ahead and close the public hearing at eight fifty-nine. Thank you very much. All right, so next one, we're up to resolutions.
Resolution number twenty-one dash two eighty-five, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, setting the hearing dates on a requested annexation of property into the City of Liberty Lake.
Motion.
Good, go ahead, Mayor Protim.
Yes, thank you, Ann. Make a motion to approve resolution number two, one dash two eighty-five, setting hearing dates for CVSD annexation.
Second.
Second. Okay, councilmember Woodruff. All right, any discussions, I figure. Lisa, you want to go over this just real quick, what, what the dates are and what the expectations are?
Yeah, so just very quickly, um, state law, at your last meeting, council, or the two meetings ago, council did a motion to consider this annexation and that you wanted to consider the zoning at the same time. State law requires that if you're doing the zoning simultaneous to the annexation, that you need to have two hearings thirty days apart. The first hearing date will be on June first, and the second hearing date will be on July sixth. And there is a whole schedule related to the SEPA reviews, et cetera, prior to your hearing, and then there's a whole process after that to actually, should you approve that annexation, to get it recorded. And so, long story short, is that the next step for you is, are the hearings.
Any questions or discussion? Councilman McCurk?
Um, Lisa, I haven't been through this before. So with the questions about the zoning, when, when are we, when do we discuss those things regarding the, I think it was between the R two and the R one and the density of housing?
So you, you would, you would discuss those at the public hearing, you could give indication. One of the things that, because I know that that is something that may need to be talked about a little bit, I'm proposing that we don't actually bring the ordinance back for first read until the meeting after the second public hearing, so that you can give me direction as to how to draft that ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution twenty-one dash two eighty-five, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. We have some first read ordinance.
First read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number two seven five. In ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending City of Liberty Lake landscape regulations contained in the City Development Code.
And then we have first read. Oh, sorry, go ahead, I was just going to introduce you on the next one.
First read ordinance, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number one seven six dash B. In ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance number one seven six, passed on July twenty-first, two thousand and nine, entitled, Establishing an Independent Salary Commission in Order to Set the Salaries of the City's Elected Officials, Providing for the Appointment in Terms of Commission Members and for Removal of the Same, Establishing Effective Dates for Salary Increases and Decreases Approved by the Commission, Subject to Referendum, Providing for Severability and Establishing an Effective Date, and Repealing Ordinances one seven six and one seven six dash A in their entirety.
Great, thank you. Now, I know this will come back for a second read along with the landscape code. At our meeting on the eighteenth, we have extended the salary commission application to the twenty-first. All right, so we've got no emergency ordinances, upcoming, introduction of upcoming agenda items. Mayor and council, on May eighteenth, we will have before you, for your consideration, the purchase of five Axon Enterprises body worn cameras for our police department, award of a contract to Patera for our phone services. We hope to have approved, your approval for the development agreement with Liberty Lake Land Company for the fourth leg of the traffic signal, Legacy Ridge. A public hearing on the sign code, a first read ordinance on the sign code, and a second read ordinance on the landscape code. And I think also a second read ordinance on the.
One seven six.
One, um, one seven six. Great, all right. If you, if you, I'm just going to run through the quick notes that I took with regards to things that we're going to provide. So with regards to council rules and procedure, we'll have first red lines for our next meeting on the eighteenth. We will follow up with discussions with regards to possible assistance with the speeds on country, North Country Vista between Mission and Appleway. We will see on a future agenda item, the Liberty Lake Together, Grow Together art piece. We got that. Sorry, I just went through, and then Lisa, you say you will email red lines to council on the sign code. I think that's all I have. All right, did I miss anything? All right, so we do have an executive session coming up. Before I get to into that, Sean, I think I saw you on, I've got a question for you.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, so, so the executive session is for RCW forty-two dot thirty-one, ten, one, aye for potential litigation. There is possibly an action that might come out of this, but we're not, I'm not, we're not sure. So we do have a separate executive session meeting, Zoom meeting set for this. If there is going to be a decision out of that, I'm assuming we have to come back into this Zoom meeting notice, which is the public meeting?
Uh, yes, we would have to do that.
Okay, so Todd, from a technology standpoint, I just want to check with you. So if we, if we all log out of this meeting, we'll give a time for coming back for the public. Is it possible to go back in and reopen that same Zoom meeting once we all get out?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so just want to make sure we have that clear. So it is now nine oh six. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, thank you very much. Citizen comments. Got so excited about another executive session. So I apologize, everybody. Is there anybody else who would like to add citizen comments for, for today? If so, just let Todd know in the chat. Getting any, Todd? All right, so we will all assume, oh, councilmember Lightford.
I'd just like to make an announcement, there's been some speculation going on, one way or the other. But I just want to inform the council, the mayor, the staff, that I will not be seeking reelection to the council position on May seventeenth through twenty-first. So it will be open for position four, and I wish I could tell you it was with heavy heart, but it's not. Very happy that we made this decision along with myself and my wife and some friends. And thank you very much for having me here.
You'll have big shoes to fill out. You know, you'll have a lot of spare time on Tuesday night. You can come visit us on Zoom. Oh, oh, boy. Oh, boy, you did.
Teaser, teaser alert.
Okay, so back to executive session. So, so for the public, public benefit, so they have a time. So can we, Lisa, we'll come back at nine fifty, we'll have to make sure our. So I'm going to jump in.
Yeah, I totally do.
So Sean, the first item may take about ten minutes, ten to fifteen minutes. Can we go into the executive session, come out and make a, have the council make a decision and then go back? That's what I think the mayor was discussing.
Actually, wasn't.
We're going to wait till the whole thing.
Yeah, it's the second one that I would like, we may.
Mayor, I think, I think what we, I think your suggestion is appropriate. If at nine fifty, we can come back and if it's necessary that we'll need to extend the meeting or we'll adjourn in the meeting, where we are at that point, we can advise the public as to what our intentions are. I think that's more appropriate.
Thank you. Okay, so we will plan on that. So we will come back to this Zoom meeting at nine fifty and either adjourn or have an action at that time. In the meantime, we will adjourn to executive session. So if the public is interested in coming back at nine fifty, use the same meeting link. For now, we will be adjourning the regular meet, actually not adjourning the regular meeting, moving into executive session, and then we'll come back at nine fifty. So we'll, we'll get onto the executive session here for those who are still remote, about five minutes. All right, thanks, everybody. I don't think we had to rat anybody else who saw your face on the screen, Todd. Okay, everybody, thanks. Thanks for jumping back with us. We actually, we're, we, we had an. We actually, we're, we, we had a motion, a request to extend the meeting so we had come back into this meeting so we could take the motion and vote to extend the meeting. There will be no decisions. We will then go back into executive session and then when that is over, we will adjourn. So there will be no decisions tonight. However, we do need to take care of the meeting extension. So Mayor Protem.
I make a motion that the council, we extend the meeting until 11:00 PM.
My second motion. Motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven out of seven. So our meeting is officially extended to 11:00 PM. Will not be extended any later. Well, yeah, so, but we don't have a time limit on the executive session. But yeah, we will be in executive session up to and no later, no later than 11:00 PM. We will be leaving at that point because we don't have, we don't extend past 11:00 PM. So thanks, everybody, again, thanks for staying up. We will see you in a couple Tuesdays. So we are now for the council, we are headed back to the executive session meeting notice. Good night, all.